Well, good afternoon and welcome to the Oklahoma City Planning Commission. Let me see if I can get the microphone to work properly. We are excited to have you all here. Before we begin, I just want to start with a few housekeeping items. First, if you are interested in speaking to the commission about an item and you are not an applicant, please make sure you complete one of these forms. We're only going to be calling on people for items that we're hearing. We're only going to be calling on people who have filled out the form, so please make sure you do so. We do ask that when you're called on, that you limit your comments to five minutes. And we do ask that you please refrain from repetitious comments. So if your neighbor who spoke before you is concerned about drainage and you are also concerned about drainage, you don't have to add drainage to your comments. You can bring us a new concern that your previous neighbor had not brought up. I would recommend that if you're here with a large group, you consider appointing someone from your group who could represent all of the issues. And I promise we'll make sure that they get some more time to be able to explain all of the issues, but that can make it a little bit easier for us to process when it's a coherent effort. Not required, but encouraged. Finally, we just ask that you please be respectful of each other. Please be respectful of the applicants. Please be respectful of our process here today. So with that, we'll begin with receipt of the minutes from the February 22nd, 2024 meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to receive the minutes from the February 22nd Planning Commission meeting.
Commissioner Claire moves to receive the minutes from the February 22nd, 2024 meeting. Is anybody else seeing the second on the screen? I'm not. Okay, mine's not appearing. Okay. Let me refresh. Sorry. Working on the technology here. The motion is to receive the minutes from the February 22nd meeting. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your votes when available. And the motion passes. Excellent. We're in line for continuance requests and we'll begin with uncontested requests.
Item 27, case PUD 1996 has been withdrawn.
Is there anyone here that was wanting to be heard on that item, 27? Know that it's been withdrawn if you were. Next, new requests.
We have three new requests. Item 12, case SPU D 1598 defer to March 28th. Item 21, CPA 2023-5 defer to April 11th. And item 22, case PC 10920 defer to April 11th.
Is there anyone here wishing to be heard on any of those items? All right. It's items 12, 21, and 22.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to approve the new continuance requests as read.
Commissioner Claire moves to approve of the new continuance requests as read. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Newman. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. We are, there are no items for this consent docket, so we'll begin with the items requiring separate vote, and we'll start with item one.
Item one is case C 7629, final plat of Britton Place located east of the John Kilpatrick Turnpike and south of West Britton Road.
Good afternoon. Kendall Dillon with Crafton Toll representing the applicant. This is a final plat that not only conforms to your zoning ordinance, but is almost identical to the approved preliminary plat, so it obviously conforms to that. I would think it would have been on consent docket. However, staff did receive a letter of protest. It was really more of just an inquiry in terms of drainage. So we've reached out to Mr. Draper. I'm not sure if he's here today or not, but we've sent him some emails with our grading and showed him how the drainage has worked, so I think we got that squared away. And we have two standard TEs that we're in agreement with and would ask for your approval.
Dang, I was hoping this was going to be an opportunity for us to go ahead and let Barry come up and do his whole drainage explanation at the first item for the day. So, okay, all right. We'll save it.
Try and save time.
This is, this is in Ward 1, Commissioner Claire.
Yeah. I didn't have any questions. You're agreeable to the TEs, and I was going to acknowledge Mr. Draper's email, and you did that for me, so thank you very much. And I'm prepared to make a motion if there's no further questions or discussion.
I think you're ready.
All right. I'll move approval of item C 7629.
Commissioner Claire moves approval of C 7631. Who's 29, excuse me. C 7629, I'm looking at the wrong item. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. Thank you. We're in line for item two.
This is case C 7631, preliminary plat of South Portland Rail Park located south of Southwest 29th Street and west of South Portland Avenue along with a variance to table 5.1 in section 5.3.2.8 of the subdivision regulations.
Hi there, John Doyle, Cedar Creek Engineering, representing the applicant. This is a preliminary plat, like he said. It's zoned I-2, and they will conform to all the zoning codes. There is a flood plain in the area. We have already done a no-rise study for this, and it's been approved. And I looked through, there are two TEs, and we are, we agree with both of them.
And you still need the variance, right?
Correct. That's one of the TEs. Yes, yes, sir.
Okay. This is in Ward 3, Commissioner Meek.
Yes, sir. I've went and checked out this area and met with the applicant. I don't have an issue with the variance, with the constraints of the railroad and the other developments that are in place. There's no other option really on the 1,700-foot cul-de-sac. So unless there's any other questions from other commissioners.
Just one question. What was the width of that roadway?
The width?
Is it just a standard 26-foot road?
I believe so. It might be 32, but it's 26, probably.
Any other questions from commissioners?
Yes, I believe it's 32.
That would be better.
Yes.
Any other, without that, we can start with the motion on the variance.
Okay. With that, I'd like to recommend a vote on the variance in table 5.1, 5.3, 0.2, 8. Recommend approval of the variance.
Commissioner Meek moves to approve the variance to table 5.1 in section 5.3.2.8 of the subdivision regulations. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Claire. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. We're in line for item three.
Item three is PUD 1715-SPU 09, application for plan pursuant to the approval of PUD 715, located at 2111 Northwest 50th Street.
We, oh, sorry, we didn't.
Yep.
Sorry, I kept on going. So sorry. Right? Glad Sarah caught it. Sorry, and David was like, ready to go. Sorry.
I'll just stand here awkwardly while you guys finish the last.
Vote on the previous item? So sorry. I'm moving too fast, y'all.
No, you're good. I need to move to approve C-7631.
Okay. Commissioner Meek moves to approve C 7631. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Privet. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. Okay, we're all set. Thank you, Sarah. Sorry. I'll move slower.
No.
David.
You're doing great.
No, I said, "I'll move slower." You, you go ahead.
Did it get called?
Do we, do we want to call it?
Yeah.
PUD 1715-SPU 09, application for a specific plan pursuant to the approval of PUD 715, located at 2111 Northwest 50th Street.
David Box, 522 Call Court Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. This is the latest application for a specific plan for Oak. This is a non-programmed building on the south side of the park. It could be a variety of things. Think seasonal-type pop-up things within the confines of the building. Again, it's on that south side. There you go. It's on the south side of that open space that will exist. It conforms to the PUD. Haven't answered any questions.
Thank you. This is Ward 2, Commissioner Powers.
I don't have any questions about this, and I note that it is in conformance with the PUD. Is there anybody here who signed up to speak?
No.
So if nobody else has any questions, I'll move approval.
I just want to know when it's going to be, what's completion date look like?
Of like the entirety of the project?
Yeah.
I think the sign says fall of, I don't know what it says.
Okay.
Fall of something.
Will commit to it right now on TV?
I won't. I'm not turning any dirt out there.
Client might not like that.
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure it's going to be sooner rather than later. I mean, I think they're ready to go.
Looks good.
As quick as they can move.
We'll call this the Box Building.
Okay.
The what building?
The Box.
Hey, I love that. I'll tell my client that was conditioned upon approval.
As someone who drives by often, they're making very good progress.
They really are.
That's cool. Okay, Commissioner Powers moves to approve of the special permit to PU, special permit, excuse me, specific plan number nine for PUD 1715. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your votes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're in line for item four.
Item four is case ED 240, application to dedicate Curry Boulevard and Southwest 11th Street to the public located, located north of Southwest 15th Street and east of South Mustang Road.
Good afternoon. Terry Haynes here on behalf of the applicant Cedar Group. We've read through the TEs. There's two standard TEs, and I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. This is in Ward 3, Commissioner Meek.
Yes, sir. I spoke with the applicant, and once again, everything looks to be in line with the two, they are agreeable to both TEs, and if there's no other comments, I'm ready to move for approval.
I do have one question of clarification. Is this a recommendation to city council, or do we have authority to dedicate this street? Okay. It's recommendation.
Recommend, recommend approval of ED 240.
Commissioner Meek moves to recommend to city council approval of ED 240. Motion's been seconded by Commissioner Newman. Please cast your votes. The motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're in line for item five.
Item five is case PC 10915, application to rezone 7601 North Central Avenue from PUD 1987 and R1 to I-1.
Good afternoon. Mark Zitzow, Johnson &amp; Associates, 20 Sheridan Avenue. Unlike Mr. Box, I patiently waited my turn.
You're right. Thank you for setting an example, Mark.
Thank you. So this is an application you've actually seen once before recently. It did not make it to city council. We've brought it back after the public notice went out, the R1 tract of land. That owner approached our client and said, "I own a landlocked piece of property. Would you like to purchase it?" My client did, so rather than complete it and file a new application, we brought this back and included it within the development. So with that, happy to answer any questions, but we would ask for your recommendation of approval.
Thank you. This is in Ward 7. I am entirely in support and don't have any questions. Any questions from commissioners? There is no one signed up to speak.
All right. If there's no questions, I'm prepared to make a motion.
You can go ahead.
Okay. I'll move to recommend approval to city council of PC 10915.
Commissioner Claire moves to recommend approval of PC 10915 to city council. The motion's been seconded by Commissioner Goveen. Please cast your votes. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're in line for item seven.
Item seven is SP.
Six, sorry.
Item six is PC 10922, application to rezone 1512 South Flyers Avenue from C4, SRODD and MH to R2, SRODD and MH.
Hi there, Andy Nelson with Nelson MBM Investments. Just here to answer any questions.
Sounds like the building's already there.
Yeah.
It's non-conforming. You just want to go back to the zoning that it would take to be able to use it.
Yeah, it's been a duplex its whole life right there. I don't know why it was ever zoned commercial. Just trying to go back to R2.
Sounds great. I'm in full support. This is in Ward 7. Don't have any questions. Anybody else have questions?
All right. I will move to recommend approval to city council of PC 10922.
Commissioner Claire moves to recommend approval of PC 10922 to city council. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Privet. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. Thank you. We're in line for item seven.
Item seven is case SP 586, application for a special permit to operate used unit 8250.15, moderate impact institutional in the I-2 district located at 701 North Sierra Road.
Hey, Tom Vought. I'm a portion of the applicant, so yeah, any questions you have, let me know.
Excellent. Commissioner Meek?
Yes, sir. I've met with the applicant and went out and checked this area out just to let the other commissioners know this will be a gravel yard with a concrete approach, and this whole area is gravel. There's a Deleese plant, or I mean, a concrete plant at the end of the street. Schlumberger has gravel. Lopez Foods across the street has gravel, and I don't see any problem with this application. I didn't know if there would be anybody that was signed up to speak.
There is no one signed up to speak.
Okay. If, if there's no other questions, then I'm ready to make a motion.
Commissioner Meek, now, how much time are you spending in the car driving across the vast Ward 3 to go to every single case? You keep saying I went to the side. Do you go every time?
Well, the, these were all in the same area, so I made one trip and hit, I had four cases, I hit three of them in one day.
Look at you. Great.
And talked to Mr. Vought, so, yes.
This truck's still new, so.
Oh, he's got a new truck. That's why.
I'm trying to get that first full change.
Okay. Okay.
Yes. So with that, I'd like to move approval of SP 586. Recommend approval.
Commissioner Meek moves to recommend to city council approval of SP 586. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Newman. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. Thank you. We're in line for item eight.
Item eight is CE 1113, application to close a portion of the Northwest 90th Street right-of-way between block 45 and 46 of Britton Heights Edition west of Northwestern Avenue and north of Northwest Canadian Heights Street.
Once again, David Box, 522 Call Court Drive. This is a closing application for some right-of-way that deadens into the railroad right-of-way. It's unused by anyone other than my client. Staff does recommend approval. We are in agreement with the TE.
Excellent. This is in Ward 2, Commissioner Powers.
Yeah, I do not have any particular issues or questions about this, but I'm curious enough if there's anybody signed up to speak.
There is no one signed up to speak.
Is it your intention to vacate this?
Yes.
Okay. So if not, and if other commissioners don't have any comments or questions, I'll move approval of CE 1113.
Commissioner Powers moves to recommend approval of CE 1113 to city council. That motion has been seconded by Commissioner Claire. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. We're in line for item nine.
Item nine is case CE 1118, application to close a portion of an east-west platted utility easement on Lane 11 and Block 9 of Cedar Ridge at Morgan Creek, Section 3, west of Angel Oak Drive and north of southwest 44th Terrace.
Once again, David Box, 522 Call Court Drive. This is an effort to close and vacate a portion of a utility easement. A home was built 1.69 feet into the utility easement. In this case, the utility easement is a 20-foot easement rather than what you would typically see a 15-foot easement. The structure itself is 1.69 feet into that utility easement. It is worth noting that the actual sewer line is actually on the south side of the fence, meaning it's not on my client's property. So I believe it's an eight-foot separation between the structure and the sewer line. It also has a pad and an HVAC unit on it. The question was asked to us as to not, whether or not we could agree to move that HVAC pad and the unit. One of the complicating factors here is that my client is the home builder. The client sold the house. Someone already owns the house, and so my client is comfortable in trying to get that accomplished. But of course, it will take the agreement of the homeowner to move that pad. So we can agree to it with this caveat that the worst case, we could always apply for a revocable permit that would put the homeowner and subsequent homeowners on notice that in the event that the city had to get in there and remove that pad, it would be on them. So we agree in principle, but of course, it will require the homeowner to agree to allow us to do that because we no longer own the property.
Okay. Go ahead, Commissioner Noble. Oh, is it not me? Is it not you? Why was I picking on you? Because we talked, because you and I talked about it so much. Sorry, go ahead, Commissioner Meek.
Yes. So I did not go to this location, but spoke to the applicant multiple times and visited with Public Works. Did you have any comments?
Barry.
Barry Lodge, Public Works. Sorry to interrupt the flow of the discussion. We did meet yesterday with, with David to discuss this closure, and, and we're okay with, with closing and vacating the portion of the easement where the house is encroaching. And so the only thing we would ask to be done before this goes to council is that the part, that the legal description of the closure area that includes that air conditioner pad be revised so that it only includes the encroachment of the house. And we have come to the agreement that, that if they can move the air conditioner pad and get it out of the easement completely, that's going to be the preferable way to approach this. If that winds up being something that the homeowner won't agree to, becomes too problematic, then we, we are in favor of working on the revocable permit for that. But we do need to get that, the closure legal description corrected before this goes to council.
David, do you have a good reading of what we would need to do, a TE, or?
I think a TE would just be that prior to city council, the legal description would be reduced to just encompass the encroachment that exists by way of the home and not the HVAC pad.
That makes sense to me. Commissioner Meek?
Yes, sir. I, I agree with that. I, I spoke to a title specialist that said if the home, if the homeowner got a revocable filed at the county on that address, it would help future owners, unsuspecting owners, to know that, that there was an encroachment, that they could be liable if they did not remove the air conditioner unit, and I'm fine with that. So, and if there's no other comments from any other commissioners, I'm ready to make a motion.
You're good.
Okay. I'm ready to recommend approval of CE 1118 with a TE number one existing. TE number two, that a revocable permit is required. And TE number three, that the legal description be reduced to cover the encroachment of the home only.
Do we need TE two as you just read it? I think we just need that description that David read into the record earlier, right?
Yeah.
I don't think we need the, we need to, we don't need to require the revocable permit. We just need to have that language.
We'll either move it, or we'll have to go back.
Okay, one or the other. I'm fine as it's read, then. Yes, sir.
Can you just, one more time for us to make sure?
Boy, I said it so well the first time. Prior to the city council hearing, the legal description will be reduced to just encompass the structure that encroaches, not the HVAC pad.
Excellent.
I feel like it was better the first time, but that'll probably work.
That's okay. I mean, they'll go, when we go back and get the record straightened out, we'll have that, that reading from the first way of saying it. Okay. Commissioner Meek moves to recommend approval of CE 1118 to city council, subject to an additional technical evaluation as read into the record. That motion's been seconded by, by Commissioner Goveen. Please cast your votes. Thank you. The motion passes. Thank you. We're in line for item 10.
Item 10 is case PC 10923, application to rezone 1401 Northeast 44th Street from R1 and HNO to R2 and HNO.
My name is Dorita Hurd, just here to answer any questions y'all might have.
So you are wanting to create a duplex on this?
I am.
And it's currently a vacant lot?
Currently a vacant lot, sir.
Have you had any conversations with the Park Estates neighborhood about this?
Well, I actually am a resident of the Park Estates neighborhood. I'm just trying to build a, build a duplex so I have some more space.
So do you, where do you live? Do you live next door to it?
37.
Okay. That's cool. I would recommend, while I'm in support of this proposal, I would recommend that you probably have some conversations with Councilwoman Nice before it gets to city council.
I've talked to her before about it, but not anyone specifically. There's no organized community association, but I have talked to her about.
That'd be good, just to make sure. But I think it's good to, you know, fill in those vacant lots and create more density is a good thing for Northeast Oklahoma City. So I don't have any questions. Are there any questions from commissioners? And there's no one signed up to speak.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, since this is your ward, I'll move to recommend approval of item PC 10923.
Commissioner Claire moves to recommend approval to city council of PC 10923. The motion's been seconded by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes.
Thank you.
Good luck. We're in line for item 11.
Item 11 is case PC 10924, application to rezone 1025 Southeast 15th Street from R1 and SRODD to C3 and SRODD.
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Shazam Chima. I'm the applicant, and I'm here to see if you have any questions.
Excellent. Could you tell us a little bit more about what, what you're doing and where this, what's happening with this site?
There is nothing in particular in plan as of yet. It's currently R1, and we would like to change it to C3. There are some C3s around to see something to build on light commercial.
Excellent. And it's right next to industrial, but there's no, there's nothing going on. It's just an open field currently, right?
Yes, sir. It's, it's just the vacant lot.
And then next door is the, is the industrial zoning as well?
Yes, sir.
With the houses, this is more of a question for staff. With the houses across the street to the south, what limitations, if any, does that place on the ability, on lot coverage, et cetera, for C3? So I know lot coverage for C3 is like, is high.
Sarah Walsh, Planning Department. Lot coverage for C3 is 100%, but this is in the Seenic River Overlay Design District, and so he's retaining all of the design requirements and regulations, and so we are comfortable with the straight zone with that in place.
That's true. Okay. While I'm in support, I don't have any other questions. Any questions from commissioners?
We did. I may have just missed it, not able to locate, but we have a recommendation from Seenic River Overlay Design District.
In support.
In support of it?
Mm-hmm.
Very good. All right. Well, I will make a motion to recommend approval of PC 10924.
Commissioner Claire moves to recommend to city council approval of PC 10924. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Newman. Please cast your votes. The motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're in line for item 13.
This is SPU D 1604, application to rezone 5421 South May Avenue from R1.
Hi. Thank you.
I'm Swahili Manzor, here on behalf of Migueli Manzor, my dad, just to answer any questions. I'm Sway Manzor, here on behalf of Miguel Manzor, my dad, just to answer any questions.
Okay, so this is, can you tell us more about your project and what all is going on with this?
We're just applying to allow for a small barber shop on the main building, the first floor. It'll be four chairs, and that's it.
And then the parking? What's the plan for parking?
The parking, we can utilize the lot right next to it, to the north of that first building. There's also a main entrance off of South May, so we don't have to interrupt traffic to 53rd.
Are there any other, are there any other commercial uses along May Avenue between 53rd?
So between 44th and 59th, I believe there's a total of seven on that strip of May Avenue. There's a Chinese restaurant, there's a gas station, and then on each corner, there's a few shopping centers.
Are, is the, is the house or the attached, the accessory dwelling unit, are they being occupied? Are the people who live there?
No.
Okay. This is in Ward 6, Commissioner Govine. Sorry, I just jumped on questions.
No, it's good. That's all relevant. I wanted to know more about the parking, and I think I have a question for staff. I just want to make sure it's clear, is by approving this spud, does that mean the parking needs to be upgraded to meet city standards? Or is it allowed as is, assuming no new structures or permits are applied for? Do we?
So as of right now, that little lot has recycled cement gravel, but we're, I mean, if we need to make improvements, we don't have a problem doing that. I don't know what the requirements are, to be honest.
I don't, I'm not sure. That's why I wanted to check. But I wanted to make sure you were aware of any, any things that were like, were coming with this approval, like if it's going to be a burden on you, that you're aware of that. That's all, that's the only reason I asked.
Sarah Welch Planning, I think, you know, typically, all parking needs to be paved specifically for this use. If it's not paved now and not permitted now, if it had been permitted, they would have required it to be paving. Technically, you could use your SPUD process to allow an alternate surface. That is an option for you. But normal code would require paving and landscaping.
Okay.
If they, if they want to have the possibility of a permeable surface, do we have to specify that? It's not just any kind of paving anywhere can be permeable if it meets our requirements.
Right, we would have to put into the spud that permeable paving is allowed, and we have a standard statement for that. But I think if he's, he's already installed the paving, so I think for him and permitting, it would be most important to make sure you're permitting whatever he's installed, if that makes sense.
Well, if it's up to our standards, I'm not, you know.
We have not inspected it, so.
So we don't know. But, but, so currently, the permeable paving is not what's being used?
I believe right now it's permeable.
Oh, it is.
It's permeable, correct, yes.
Gravel, okay. Specify that.
If you do not specify it, the parking for this site will have to meet code, which would be paved.
So, so my thought on the matter would be that we include language that says, "The site shall comply with current site development standards," because that means they need to do parking and landscape buffers, the appropriate landscape buffers, but also say that permeable paving would be allowed.
I support that.
Yeah.
Are you good with that?
Yeah, yeah, no problem.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll comply with whatever requirements are necessary. This is my first time going through this, so.
Understood.
You're doing good.
Site proof screening is also a inherent in your NBS language, so if you, if you don't already, you would have to have a six-foot fence adjacent to any other residential.
We'll make that happen.
Okay.
We'll make that happen, yep.
I think that's all the questions. And then you're aware that the only uses allowed are barber shop salon and the existing residential.
Correct, correct. That's all we're looking to get.
Okay, well, I don't know, is anyone signed up to speak?
No one signed up to speak.
Any other questions? In that case, I move to recommend approval of SPUD 1604.
And do we need the additional language?
Sorry, with the addition, with TE1 as written, and the additional, addition of TE2, which says permeable paving shall be allowed.
And, and, and site development standards per Oklahoma City are met.
In accord, yes. Do I need to repeat that?
Yeah.
Okay, let's say.
Let's just make sure we're all good. You want to say that one more time, Nate?
I like Mr. Box said it best the first time.
Yeah, yeah.
No, I would say the TE says that approval is contingent on, you know, site development standards being met in regards to paving, landscape buffers, site proof screening, and permeable paving would be allowed.
I like that wording. Thank you.
Commissioner Govine moves to recommend approval of SPUD 1604 to city council. That motion includes an additional TE number two that, as read into the record by Commissioner Claire. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Privet. Please cast your votes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck. We're in line for item 14.
Item 14 is case SPUD 1605, application to, excuse me, to rezone 3305 Northwest 192nd Street from SPUD 1194.
Dean Colletta, representing the applicant. I think that map may be slightly different there. Is this the zoning for the residential?
Is this the right exhibit? This is not the right exhibit?
Yeah.
Yeah, 14.
Yeah, this is the right one. This is the commercial one. Commercial, yeah, we got the residential side.
You're not the applicant on that.
Gotcha.
Thomas Bowley.
Okay, do we have, do we have an applicant present for item 14? Doesn't appear we have an applicant present, so we'll just push it. We'll push it to see if, unless there's, and I didn't see anything objectionable in this. What are you thinking?
I mean, the concern with the city not providing service and.
Yeah, then we should wait. Then we'll, we'll push it to the end of the agenda. I don't believe I need to take any formal action. Let's just move on to item 15. All right, we'll move on to item 15.
Okay, item 15 is case PUD 1995, application to rezone 19619, Thomas Drive from R1.
Dean Colletta, Civil and Environmental Consultants, 4700 Guardia Parkway. Sorry about that. Same client, different track. This is our piece here. So this basically PUD is to rezone this property. It's a multi-phase property. This is phase six of the development, and, you know, the front half is the commercial piece, and then the rest is residential. So the goal is to provide different housing products for this area. There's regular single-family lots, you know, 6,000, 7,000 square foot lots. There's large lots up to 12,000. Then there's also duplex, and then there's also garden home type products as well. So there's a variety of home products for this area. And this one is tailored towards R2 zone, which is going to be a duplex development, and we meet the comprehensive plan, and it's pretty compatible to all the surrounding areas with the residential to the east and to the south as well. I'd be happy to ask you questions if you have.
Excellent. This is in Ward 8. Commissioner Noble?
Just one thing, on the facade regulation, do you have any problem changing it from 50% brick to 70% brick? And brick, veneer, rock, stone, masonry, rock, stone, fiber, cement, siding?
We have no problem with that. Yeah, I spoke with it.
It's more of a common 70, 30.
That's fine, yeah. He plans to do pretty quality development here.
Any other questions? Any other questions from commissioners? We have no one signed up to speak. All right, we're just looking for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval for PUD 1995.
Commissioner Noble moves to recommend to city council approval of PUD 1995.
With the amendment to the facade regulation.
With the amendment to the facade regulations requiring 70% of the brick, excuse me, 70% brick, veneer, rocker, stone, masonry, rock, stone, fiber, cement, siding, or other similar type of finish. The motion's been seconded by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes? Thank you. We're in line for item 16.
This is case C 7632, preliminary plat of country colonnade phase six, located north of Northwest 192nd Street and east of North Portland Avenue, in a variance to section 5.2.8.8A of the subdivision regulations.
Dean Colletta, Civil and Environmental Consultants, 4700 Guardia Parkway. This is tied to the PUD that we just heard, and obviously, this is for the duplex development side, preliminary plat. We do agree all the TEs, and for the access, secondary access for the development, we do plan to put a secondary access point in the northeast corner, which is upper left of your page. That would tie down to 192nd, or not 100, sorry, 196th Street. And so that will be a permanent access point through the neighborhood there, and then temporary fire access until the next phase is going to be built, which is phase seven to the east. So we shouldn't need a variance if we have the access requirement met.
So you're going to meet the access requirement? So we don't need to take any action?
Correct, yes, sir. So we agree to the TEs.
Okay. Commissioner Noble?
And with the temporary access, does that take the, what the fire marshal said?
Yes, sir.
Out?
Yeah, I believe the staff would have had three different options, and we're choosing the option C, which is the most cleanest option to create that. And then when the next phase comes in, it'll all be connected, and that temporary access would just go away. It's going to be, it would be a hard pace surface at that point for the next phase.
Okay. And so that, that access is coming out the east side and going back?
And goes south to 192nd.
Ties into that road.
196th.
So you wouldn't need a variance either, right?
So just, okay. So I guess we're, we're just, we don't even need, we don't need TE3, so I guess we're just approving everything else. Do we don't need four either? Without the, okay.
No three, no four.
Okay.
Yeah, and the mention of the fire suppression would go away, because if we meet the access, that wouldn't be needed as well.
Then it's no issue with that.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And then, I think, and there is, you're aware of the, the city's not supplying service.
Yes, sir, yeah.
We have no one signed up to speak. I think we're, we're ready.
No other questions? Recommend approval for C 7632?
Subject to deletion of TEs 3 and 4.
3 and 4, right.
This is not a recommendation of approval. It is an approval.
This is an approval.
Yeah.
Commissioner Noble moves to approve C 7632, deleting TEs 3 and 4. The motion's been seconded by Commissioner Claire. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We're in line for item 17.
Item 17 is SPUD 1608, application to rezone 2769 Northwest 21st Street from R2.
Come on.
Sorry, I wasn't sure if that one was me. Fallon Brooks Magnus Jolly Bird Design, representing the applicant. We are taking a current single-family lot and adding a duplex on the rear, on the rear of the lot, so.
This is in Ward 6. Commissioner Govine?
Sure.
Okay, yes, well, we've been talking about accessory dwelling units quite a bit lately, and so it's all, it's fresh on our minds. I don't have any problems with this, but I do have a couple of questions. Well, let's just say, okay, first of all, the, it's a corner lot, so the, being a duplex ADU seems consistent with where things are headed in that regard. The one, you are asking for 30 feet, is the, the new regs that are being, currently being reviewed and all that are a little lower than that, but do you know the height of the existing residence? Is it 35 or?
I think it's a little over 30, just barely.
Okay.
Yeah, we're right at it.
I want to make sure that it's in this area, that it wasn't exceeding that. So I don't think I have a problem with the 30-foot height.
No.
In this case, in this particular part of the city. So maximum two buildings. The exist, is the existing residence is to remain? Is that correct?
Is what?
Is the existing residence is to remain?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, I'm, I don't have any other issues. Is there any other questions from other commissioners?
Have there been other reconstructed garage apartments in the area too that have been turned into two-story?
Right, right.
I've done like five in this neighborhood alone.
Exactly. A friend of mine owns one of them, so that's, I don't think it's an issue, but I want to make sure that anyone else has anything, has a chance to speak, and if not, I am prepared to move approval.
Excellent. Commissioner Govine moves to recommend approval of SPUD 1608 to city council. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Claire. Please cast your votes. The motion passes. Thank you. We're in line for item 18.
Item 18 is SPUD 1588, application to rezone 3208 North Indiana Avenue from SPUD 1462.
Me again. Fallon Brooks Magnus Jolly Bird Design, representing the applicant. So this one's a little more complicated. It's a half lot. There's already, there was a previous zoning application on it that allowed for a duplex. My client is, she, they live in the neighborhood, and they are trying to do micro units. Originally, the idea was to make them out of shipping containers, and I think we have changed that up a little bit, but it's still kind of the same, basically. Now it's stick-built. We originally were going for five units. That was very problematic. So we met with Commissioner Powers and, you know, kind of lots of back and forth with Commissioner Powers, city staff, trying to get, you know, as, as much as we could fit without going too far over on lot coverage and density and things like that. We are a little high on our density. There's four units. Staff is recommending three. So yeah, I'll answer any questions that you have.
I'm curious about the definition of microunit. What makes it, when does it go from, what makes a unit go to, but is there like?
I think there are.
400 square feet? Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so that's why that is the, the square footage that is specified in the document, so.
Yes.
Gotcha.
If they build more than two units, they have to be smaller.
Okay. It's a little tight, 400 square feet?
That's kind of one of the things that sort of caught my attention about this, just the experimental aspect of it. I mean, it's very, very close to OCU.
Yeah.
You know, the idea of it being, you know, sort of student housing or, you know, a microunit, that'd be something I would want to live in, but, you know, it seems to be something that other people find worthwhile, so. And the, the lot, there's the, the way it faces the street, it's not Indiana, is it? Is it Florida?
Indiana.
You know, it just, I think it lends itself to this. I think it'll fit in there nicely. And so if it's, if it's a maximum of, you know, 1,600, 1,800 square feet, you know, that's not really any bigger than a, probably a duplex would be if you built one in there, so. I think, I think I'm, I'm comfortable taking a chance on this product at this location and, and seeing how it goes.
And I think that's a good point. You know, the proximity to OCU is a good thing. I mean, it will obviously be more affordable.
It's very walkable. I mean, it's just right here, so, you know.
Other questions, commissioners, about this? Glad you're able to work it out with the neighbors. Sounds like they were not happy, sounds like, and they're not here now, so they must be happy now.
Oh, no, that's the next one.
That's it, okay.
Yeah.
Got it, okay.
You can.
We worked that out too.
I was like, do we get this one? Okay.
I'll note one thing for the record. I lived in a 397 square foot apartment with my wife, and that's where we had our first child.
Oh, my God.
And we were absolutely fine for a year with that amount of space. It was a one-bedroom apartment with kitchen. It wasn't any kind of unconventional unit. I'm just noting that there are, you know, that is a sufficient size if it's designed well and laid out in the way that functions. Of course, we did outgrow it when a child starts walking and you have more stuff, but so.
And you're still married?
Yeah. We're married. If you don't mind, I'll make some comments, not questions, and I'm, don't feel too strongly about this, but I'm going to vote no only because experimental maybe, but I'm sure people might want to live in something that's small, that's fine. And in apartments, that's fine, but right here are houses all around this, so I'm still And in apartments, that's fine, but right here are houses all around this, so I'm still concerned that these are just, it's not appropriate right here in the middle of houses. It's, I'll do the math, 57 units per acre. That's just a lot. So just because some people may want to pay that, I think it's not appropriate in the middle of these houses.
There's an actual apartment complex right across the street from this. It's, I don't know, how many units is it? 16, maybe 20? You know, upstairs, downstairs? Very, very unlike everything around it.
Yeah, that's helpful, but to the north, to the south, to the east, everything else around us, houses, so creeping in there, if next, the next door neighbors want micro units of, I mean, this is on .07 acres, allow micro units. I just, just a difference of opinion. I don't have questions. I just vote no, but good luck to you anyway.
Gotcha. I mean, it.
We'll see.
Yeah, we'll see. It's definitely different. Other questions, comments from commissioners?
Commissioner? Was the number four or, or three?
TE number one.
We reducing the units?
Four was where we landed.
So we're striking the TE?
Yes. Or, or changing it to three, to four rather than three, but yes.
Okay. It was, what, five originally?
Staff was good with four, two?
No, they recommended three units. There's a TE for it.
A four, so I think striking the TE if that's where we had it in that regard.
Cool. Commissioner Powers?
I'm going to move, if there's anybody else who wants to be heard, I'm going to move approval of item number 18, SPUD 1588, striking the TE.
Commissioner Powers moves to recommend approval of SPUD 1588 to City Council. This includes striking the one TE that is in the staff report. The motion's been seconded by Commissioner Govine. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes narrowly.
Barely.
Let's hope this works. Send us some pictures later, for sure.
I don't get to do design on this one, unfortunately, so.
All right, we're in line for item 19.
Item 19 is SPUD 1590, application to rezone 1144 Northwest 41st Street from R1.
Me again, okay. Fallon Brooks Magnus Jolly Bird Design representing the applicant. This one was quite contentious, but I know we have some neighbors here. I think that we've mostly worked it out. I don't know if any of them have any specific comment, but I'll leave them to that, I guess, for now. We're taking two lots and we're basically splitting it into four and we're putting on 40th and 41st. We'll have a single-family home that faces 40th and 41st. And then the back lots on each of those facing military will have duplexes. Hard to hide all of our parking in the rear and minimize the number of curb cuts that we would have. This is, I think, like the fifth or sixth site plan that I'd, so. So I will, I guess, for comments.
Okay. Commissioner Powers?
I actually have a question. Language in the staff report about the maximum building height being the R1 standard, except that buildings with flat roofs will be a maximum of 28 feet in height, which I agree with, except that I thought we had decided that we were going to do pitched roofs here. Is that something that we wanted to commit to or not?
So no, no flat roofs was my understanding.
That was my understanding as well.
Yeah, there should be a line in there. I might need to work this out with staff, but we, the MDS has changed so many times.
So I'll just make a note. We'll, we'll make it a TE.
Yeah, we can definitely put that in there.
Okay.
No flat roofs. The other thing that, that caught my attention as I was looking through this again was, we, we also decided there's just no dumpsters. There's not going to be any dumpsters. So, that also. And, and the other thing was, oh, the width of the driveways. We ended up with two on military, 24. Is that our minimum? That's really wide.
It is, unfortunately. It is. It's two-way on each of them. We have to meet that standard for parking because you're turning into.
A driveway, or a garage on one side and you're parking on the other.
Unfortunately, yeah.
Okay. I, I just wanted to make sure. It's really wide, but.
Can we go back to the height really quick, Janice? What was the height?
The height is the R1 standard, which is?
35.
35.
Oh, okay. I thought you said 28 and I thought we.
If it were a flat roof is what it says there, so.
No, no flat roofs allowed, so.
I think those were the only points I felt I wanted to clarify. I'm sure we have some people here who might want to be heard, although as I went back again through the letters, it seemed to me that we had touched on virtually everything, but I, I do want to hear from the neighbors.
I, I don't think I see anybody signed up to speak for item 19, so.
Oh, good.
Yeah, she gave it to, yeah, we should have at least one signed up.
All good. All good. Thank you. Okay, Cassidy.
Hi.
Smith-Tolliver.
It me. Thank you, Fallon. My name is Cassidy Smith-Tolliver and I am the neighborhood president of Helm Farm. I live at 12.
Oh, there we go.
16 Northwest 42nd. People say that a good thing is worth fighting for. And in Helm Farm, as many of you know, well, we have a history of working to protect the community we love while also embracing thoughtful infill changes. Over the past four months, our community has worked tirelessly with the applicant to find compromise. We've had countless email exchanges, phone calls. I have had one-on-one coffee meetings to hear concerns and we had a two-hour community meeting with Commissioner Powers and Commissioner Littlefield, where the applicant was gracious enough to really take to heart what every single neighbor had to say. And I've heard we're difficult to work with. Eight units have become six. A 3,000 square foot max has become 2,500. Parking has gone from a visible parking lot to tucked, respectfully tucked away spaces. The setbacks have become more in line with our historic setbacks and we love all of this. It's thoughtful and it's respectful. And while many changes have been agreed to and we are thankful for them, Helm Farm neighbors have asked me to come to just ask for one last change. And that is a TE on 50% lot coverage instead of 60%. We've worked down from, I think it was 67?
60, yeah.
Yeah, it was like 67. I know that it's normally said here that R1 standards are not typically applied in an SPUD, however, I have heard that even with the proposed ADU standards that you heard at your regulation development committee meeting this morning, that with the zoning standards for the UL, the U M Luda with ADUs, you cannot have more than 50% lot coverage because of future storm water runoff as we add more incremental housing. If for some reason today we are not able to achieve this compromise, our neighborhood is still very pleased with the compromise that we have seen take place and we won't seek denial today. Thank you.
Help me understand that. So your intention, so?
Yeah, we, looking at the du, there's some architects in our neighborhood and they couldn't make it today, but they were asking for 50% lot coverage on each of the lots, so lot one, lot two, lot three, lot four. And I think it's just because lot two and three maybe have a little more and lot four maybe has a little more than what would typically be seen in R1. And there was also a concern, obviously, I don't think it's going to matter as much, but with the upcoming ADU standards, the concern maybe might be that at 60%, maybe they shrunk the house down a bit and they're back at the eight units that we had asked not be there because the garage could become a garage apartment.
Now you're getting at what I was worried about.
Yeah.
Okay, we're saying one thing, but our intention is another, so.
It's, it's a little of both, right?
So, so if the concern is we need to limit the square footage of the size of these units, or is the concern the density?
The concern, right, is like we've limited it, but in theory, if they shrink the house down, we're right back at that eight-unit density that we worked to work down from six and six actually came from, that came from city staff, I believe.
I, I think we have specified the number of units that are permitted here.
We, we have, but when the new ADU standards go into effect, that won't.
supersede this.
That won't supersede this? Okay. That was the question neighbors had and that's partially why I'm here.
Okay. So knowing that what you've seen, what you all have seen, is what it will be?
They're still asking for 50%. I personally, personally, just regular resident, love it. Neighborhood president, they still would like to see 50, but we, we can live with this if we can't get there.
Okay. Commissioner Powers? I mean, I, I would say this is infill development, very carefully designed, very carefully laid out, exactly the way that it was asked for. I would say we need to stick to the agreement we have, but Fallon?
50% would absolutely kill me on this. I can't get it below 60.
I can't, can't vote for that, but I understand and I appreciate Cassidy bringing her neighbors' concerns. Any other thoughts, commissioners, on that?
I'm fine with 60% as designed.
There was a lot of give and take and, you know, these, these things are, they're not standalone issues. They're, you know, pieces of a puzzle that ultimately has to fit together somehow. So I'm, I'm comfortable with the design that we have, the layout, the design of the layout, that's what I mean. And, and I think that the, that the lot coverage is, is a good compromise for where we are.
And we've limited the units, so I just want to be clear about that.
That's right.
The units are specified.
That's right.
So that will not change if the ordinance changes around ADUs, so.
That's right. So, anybody else?
Any other comments, questions?
Is there a lot restriction on the new ADU ordinance coming? Yeah, as far as minimum lot size?
That's a good question. I don't, I don't think so.
No, it's a rate, it allows for any.
Yeah, it was a percentage of, yeah, right.
Lot coverage is the only.
It's the only thing, so, yeah.
Lot coverage, height setbacks.
Okay.
Okay, so I will move approval of item number 19, SPD 1590.
Commissioner Powers moves to recommend.
With TEs indicating that there will be no flat roofs and no dumpsters.
Commissioner Powers moves to recommend approval of SPD 1590 with the addition of two technical evaluations, one prohibiting flat roofs and another prohibiting dumpsters. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner McForge. Please cast your votes.
Thank you.
The motion passes. Thank you. We're in line for item 20.
Item 20 is case SPD 1606, application to rezone 1625 North Marion Avenue from R1 and Gatewood UCD to SPD 1606.
Hi, I'm Kenny Deason with the alley OKC and here to answer any questions.
All right, well, I'll go ahead and let Commissioner Govine start with questions.
Okay, well, I, I'd like if maybe you explained a little bit more, just to tell us about the development, what neighbors you're working with, who, you know, kind of in the agreements, specifically addressing the, well, fire access is one topic that we, that I've looked, you know, have some concerns about. I want to make sure that it's, you know, safe and accessible. And then the adjacent R1 or R2 property, I should say, to the south, what mitigating measures have you incorporated and what can, can we incorporate and discuss today that such a screening and the dumpster location? So those are kind of the concerns that I have and we might hear from others as well, but maybe if you just give us a little bit on those.
Okay. Yeah, the overall project, we're hoping to have a complex that is multi-use with commercial on the bottom, residential on the second, for mixed use, residential on the second and third floor. The units would be 600 square feet with the third floor having micro units, as has already been brought up, 300 square foot units. I served on the board of the Plaza District for almost 10 years and have been active in the Plaza District for even longer than that. We owned a coffee shop, a live music venue, and, you know, we're active as a business in the Plaza District as well. We hope that our unit can accommodate two big needs in the Plaza District. One is affordable entrepreneurship, the mixed-use units. We already do have artists in the area that would love, signed up to be in units, being able to have a gallery and live in, you know, a gallery context. And so our, our hope is a space that can also accommodate a need for temporary housing. Tourism was probably the best thing the Plaza District has ever had. In fact, I can remember when the Chamber, you know, was really aggressive about out-of-state tourism and what kind of radical impact that had on us, especially in summer months. Accommodating temporary housing in the area, I know as a business owner and a board member, something we really strove for. We feel like the diversity of our type of complex and its location on the east side of the Plaza District kind of helps close the district. That east side has been very hard for us to activate as far as its presence. I spoke with Jeff Struble at length. He owns the property just to the west of us. And there's definitely a lot of energy on both of our parts to see a stronger, more active Plaza District on that east side. Our closure across from him and the alley is a, a bad nomenclature. It's not truly an alley. But between our units, you know, there is the drive and parking area that Jeff and Amy both do have energy to see our project succeed and how that can actually help with their own developments and leases in that area. The fire, I think, you know, looking at access from 16th Street, Marion Street, as well as dumpster accesses that surround us, you know, there's food delivery trucks and dumpsters that have to have access, you know, right behind our property, there between mine and Jeff's property and as well as on the south side of the stray, there's more dumpster access there. It, it does seem like there's a variety of areas for access as far as the fire hose lays are concerned. There are some drives, as you can see in the, in the unit. I know those are only 12-foot in width, but does, you know, provide some even more accessible potential, you know, for fire needs in that area.
Does, so have you, are you aware of the four TEs that are in your staff report or in our staff report?
Say that again.
We have some technical evaluations that are, I want to discuss and so.
Yeah.
These are, we, we may agree to modify these, but that's, that's the conversation that we're having today.
Yes.
So, you know, number one, we're suggesting that the existing home be retained, that that's specified in the master design statement?
Yes.
You're aware of that one? Maximum number of residential dwelling units be reduced to 12? You'd be okay?
That was the staff recommendation.
Right.
And our recommendation, I actually don't have that paper, 15, I think, is what we were asking for. The, the density change in that area, some of that does have to do with the context of temporary housing, that we would be, that would very much be a part of the, the complex. We, you know, I feel like from living there for over 10 years, you know, right there on Marion, the, the density even as a business owner is something we welcome in the area. I've spoken with the Plaza District as well as our neighborhood. We live in class and tin pen. I think Gatewood is what's kind of officially on the record, but from our neighbors and discussions, you know, and property owners around it, right now the house to the south of us is for sale, so there hasn't been any personal dialogue with them. But in the community, I have not heard any concern for density that the project would bring about. Now, we may hear from someone today that would disagree with that, but, but there is a need, we feel like, for those businesses for bringing density into the area and we feel like our additional, our, our asking for beyond that 12, you know, is a part of that. Ask on our part for the Plaza District to allow for some more density in the area.
The, okay, and then there's, you know, specifying a parking requirement, dealing with parking is a concern, basically, and I know there's ample, there's a parking lot backing up to you and there's, you know, there's other parking options, but that's a lot of units for four spaces on your site, which is then getting covered with quite a bit of paving.
Yes.
And I do want to come back to the question of would the paving as laid out on your site accommodate fire service vehicle access? I don't, I don't know that it.
The 20-foot minimum, tho, those drives are not 20-foot correct. Yeah, the, the full access would be coming from Marion, 16th Street and then Blackwelder.
Yeah, okay. Is there?
I might talk to that, just about Mike May's 4301 Thompson Avenue. The hose lay length from Marion and from 16th Street is 150 feet and that would cover the east, the full east side of the building, part of the south and the majority of the west side of the building. So if you actually look at, kind of zoom out, look at Jeff Struble's property where there are some dumpsters that back up to the, to the alleyway, there is access there as well, which would cover the remainder of it. We've reached out to the fire marshal to see if he agrees with that, but it, it seems like it, it's, it's covered from all sides.
So do you all have some kind, so you'd be able to, Mike, what you're saying is you can fit the fire truck in that space in between or, or from 16th and that's sufficient?
So, yeah, so the 16, 16th Street would be, if you measure the distance from the hose lay, which is 150 feet, it would cover the, all of the west side of what we're proposing to build with exception of about 10 feet of the south portion of the west side. But that portion could be covered by, off of Blackwelder.
Okay.
So and then the other side could be covered by Marion.
Okay.
So we don't necessarily need drives to, to be able to cover the building. I think it's more hose lay.
Okay.
But the access on the properties, even talking to Jeff, I mean, their dumpster access and food truck delivery access is something he, he has, you know, need to preserve himself. Again, I know that that's not, you know, it's not our property, but just speaking to the, there's a lot of access that, you know, comes not only from hard access from the streets, but also from just the nature of the commercial buildings that surround us. There's a lot of unique access for those businesses and establishments through dumpster locations and food delivery service needs.
Is there a plan to basically open up to the, the west side?
The west, yes.
Have across access there? I mean, that, it's an active area, I.
Yeah, yeah, and, and we've spoken with, with Jeff, you know, again, he, he has no intention of expanding east for him. It's, it's incentive for him. Our project actually does help benefit his and, yeah, the pedestrian passageway between the two are. The project doesn't depend upon that west access. We do have 10-foot balconies, you know, from the front doors of the units facing west. Outdoor community and activity outside of the spaces is a part of our design. But, you know, the, the access can happen on our property moving to the east from the unit, but Jeff is more than happy to see that access coming toward him to the west.
Questions from others. Let's get it all out, I guess, if we have other topics to discuss.
I only have one, it's, it is the same theme. This time I'm more favorable on it. I, I am for smaller, to make it more affordable and okay with some increased density and I'll raise my hand when I think it's too dense. Here, I think, it depends on the area, here I think it may be appropriate, so if it's not unfair, I'm curious why this, I hate to go against the staff though who thinks 12, so is there any particular reasons the staff has recommended 12 instead of 15? I, I was getting comfortable with 15, but.
Yeah, I wasn't done with that yet either. I think that's still to be discussed, but I appreciate you raising the question.
Sarah Welsh, Planning Department, they're requesting 16, but 12 was just based on the urban median range of 10 to 40 dwelling units per acre. That's how many would be, 40, 41.
Okay. Well, and then my personal view on that would be if anywhere's appropriate for additional density, this is a good example of those. But.
Appreciate that.
The, the neighbor to the south, the fact that the house is for sale is actually more of a concern because they wouldn't necessarily know what they're buying if they buy it two weeks from now and this isn't approved and on record. So the dumpster location of 25 feet is a staff note, which would be 25 feet from the south boundary of the spud. That looks like it would be difficult for you to achieve that, but have you pondered that in dumpster locations?
So it, it would be a dense buffer between the two properties. And, you know, we, all of us there on Marion are adjacent to commercial. And that is, I mean, the nature of all of our properties there are surrounded by commercial. You know, it's, it's hard to conceive of somebody purchasing there on Marion Street and not expecting a pretty heavy load of commercial impact on their property that's just, I mean, that's the way it is from here on out.
I get it. What, if there's a number, what would you, I mean, what can you, if we need to put a number there, is it 10 feet? Is it 15 feet? What would you agree to?
10 feet.
10 feet?
Yeah.
What would your enclosure?
For the dumpster enclosure?
Since it's so much closer to the residential, what would you build?
Yeah, so that, Mike Mays again, that would be 10 feet to the back of the enclosure. And as Kenny was discussing or mentioning earlier, that would be heavily landscaped, the enclosure would be opaque. Yeah, we looked at several different variations to try to get that to work and that, that is really the only location that we could make work due to the position of the house south of the property, I'm sorry, north of the property and trying to fit in as much parking as we possibly could.
Were you asking about the material of the enclosure? Yeah, it would be like a stone, you know, masonry brick.
Do you know the height of the fence on the, the western boundary of these adjacent properties? Is that an eight-foot screen?
The western boundary?
Like, like the, what currently exists on the parking lot, separating parking from neighbors?
Just chain link on the back of our, on the west side of our property is just a chain link, yeah.
Well, I meant, I guess what I meant is, what I'm, what I'm leaning towards is I believe maybe an eight-foot site proof screen would be appropriate on adjacent residential as opposed to the minimum of six, which is currently in.
Right, and, yeah, on the south side, you're saying?
Yeah, and so on your south side, I was going to raise the issue of I think eight-foot might be more appropriate because of the dumpster, but I was questioning what's actually on the west already, but it's really irrelevant to that.
Right, yeah, I, I believe they, they might, it's either six or eight feet and we would be agreeable to eight feet.
Okay.
I have a few questions.
Yes, we'll buy on these.
First of all, huge fan of the Plaza, also served as a board member, love it, support it, go regularly. So I want to, I want to talk about, just make sure I'm understanding what the building's going to look like and, and the decisions around the layout. Let's start west and work our way. So on the west side of, of this site, will there be access, will there be, there will be pedestrian access to the building? Like, you're intending people to be able to go in and out of the building from that side?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and Mike and I have both spoken at length with Jeff about that topic. In fact, he wants to have an intentionally curated, visible access for that pedestrian traffic, you know, into his area, yeah.
That's really cool. Okay, that all makes sense to me and then it's three stories?
Yes.
Okay, 16 units is what you're, okay. And then let's work our way to the further east. I, when I, so when I first looked at this, one, I wondered, what's the intended plan for the existing home?
So continuing with residential and that would also be, you know, it's tying into the temporary housing, so.
Okay.
Yeah, that, the, the home, you know, built in 1910, we, we feel like is aesthetically an important part of the, the heritage of the neighborhood. You know, it's one of the old doctors from the Old Mercy on 13th that built it. And, yeah, and we intend on continuing to preserve the aesthetic of that home and make it a part of the hospitality. I mean, our, our big focus will be hospitality. We want some businesses to be in there, but, but at the end of the day, I've always, in fact, I used to be a vocal proponent to developers. Bring people and tourism into the Plaza District.
Absolutely. And different kinds of units, because, you know, we want more people who work in the Plaza to live in the Plaza. That's the goal.
Absolutely. Services are a huge impact on our economy. If somebody has any type of business that people are coming and going in order to see them. And, yeah, our curation of tenants in the building is, I mean, I've got a deep heart for the Plaza District. I've, I've bled and sweat on the streets there and we want to see it succeed.
So my next question is really about the decision to have the driveway the way that it's laid out. Because I immediately looked at it and thought, I don't think I've seen anything like that anywhere else in the Plaza. It seems awkward. It also seems like the access to it is awkward and that it's not enough parking. And I just kept thinking, me, the lawyer, not an architect, not smart enough to be an architect, won't even get close. But I, I just wondered why, why that way of doing it instead of finding a way to use that space on the south side for more parking in some way? Like, I guess I just wondered, is there a way to do this to lay it out differently, to make that circulation different? Or help me understand why that decision was made to do it this way?
Yeah, the dumpster access and being able to drive through the property moving forward was a lot of what was behind there. You know, we have, we have the space for it that is a, a natural drive to the north side. It's a commercial property to the north of us, a residential home that was converted into a commercial. And so there's really not much we can develop in that space where that existing drive is. And so that seemed natural to leave it be on that north side of the property. We did want some parking spaces and so the drive on that backside won't even be visible from Marion and it's just kind of an invisible space in the property. So it, it just seemed like something utility-wise that would have its long-term function for us, particularly the, the dumpster access was one of them.
But again, you're intending people to primarily enter through the west side, not the east side?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. It's different. I'm glad to keep the house. I think that's a good thing, so.
Yeah, me too. We raised eight kids there. And, yeah, speaking of, yeah, my wife actually nodded to me, it's like, we need to tell, yeah, we've lived in 600 square feet with four kids and loved it. We had two desks and an office, yeah, for real.
People don't need as much space as they often think they do.
It's true, yeah, we've lived in.
You can fill it if you have it.
Right, now, we've lived in San Francisco, Richmond, Berkeley, Oakland and Chicago and, yeah, small, small living conditions is.
And so on your circulation though is like basically from the south boundary of the property to where the current existing houses, you don't have enough room to get 18-foot deep spaces in a two-way in-and-out drive, do you?
Correct.
That's why you have the.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, yes, yeah. So, simple answer, yeah, the limitation in space, we really couldn't afford much to gain aside from just having that drive and some parking spaces.
My view is with good, good landscape design and good architecture, I don't have any issue with the, the site circulation personally. And I think you guys will do a good job and I'm, I'm in support of the case. So if, if there's no other conversation and no one's speaking, I will attempt to make, to move approval with, with clarification on the TEs. The number of units was the one that I wanted to come back to. So I've heard 16, I've heard you say 15, staff was asking for 12.
16.
Is, and so is there any movement on that? Do you want, I mean, I was going to suggest a compromise of 14.
Where, where are commissioners on that, on 16 versus 12? I mean, if, I'm, I'm going to vote for 16, so.
I like density.
Looking over here, I mean, I know we voted on the previous micro unit, so are we, I mean, let's, let's get a motion we can agree to. If we don't like 16, then.
I think this, as was said, is one of the few places where you can just say, if you're not going to do density here, I don't know where you would. So I, I'm the one who often has problem with higher density where it is near and impacting residential properties. But here, you know, I, I think that this is an appropriate location. I, I don't have a strong feeling, also not being smart enough to be an architect, about, you know, what's, what is an appropriate number at 12 versus 16? I don't, I don't have a strong feeling about that here.
Fine, I'm, I'm happy with 16 and I'd be excited, part of the community too. I live a few blocks away and I'd be very excited to see this happen.
16's 55 dwelling units per acre. 55, that's a lot.
A lot.
Well, I just want to confirm there's five votes for 16, because if there's not, then we need to talk about what we're hearing it doesn't, it sounds like, okay, I'm seeing some head nods, so maybe we should try it with 16 and see where we end up.
I'm going to move to recommend approval of SPD 1606, subject to TE1 as written. TE2 to be amended to 16 instead of 12.
But that's already in the MDS, right? So you can just strike two.
Okay, so we strike TE2. I think we need to specify a minimum parking requirement for the new development. The note we have says parking does not have to be located on the same parcel as the spud, but as the spud shows four parking spaces, that would be the minimum on the spud, in my mind.
Sarah, what'd you intend on that?
Our intent was to address the parking and just depending on the number of spaces that the planning commission felt comfortable with, allowing the parking to be located off the spud site. So if you want to amend that to just read that four park, four on-street or four onsite parking spaces are required as shown, that's fine.
Okay.
That, that's mine.
And then just strike the, the rest of it unless you, no, that would be fine. Actually, if they can put all four on the site, then that would satisfy parking.
Okay. So TE3 is a minimum parking requirement of four spaces for the new development. Dumpers, dumpsters shall be located a minimum of 10 feet from the south boundary of the spud and an additional TE5 of an eight-foot site proof screen shall be required to the south or any adjacent residential zone property.
To the south, right.
It is to the south, it's also the only one, but.
Okay.
I'm so sorry, can we please discuss just real quickly the dumpsters? You could delete it and then what would stand is how the spud was written, which is 10 feet from every property line? Or you can have us replace the dumpster section with a 10-foot setback from the south, which is a little more flexibility on the site.
That's better, I think, to just say 10.
Strike it and you keep what's in, it's 10 feet from any property line?
Well, 10, no, I'm saying do the 10 feet from the south, right?
Okay, okay, 10 feet, yeah.
So it's just.
So.
So revising TE, TE4 to say that dumpsters shall be located a minimum of 10 feet from the southern boundary of the spud, right, Sarah?
Correct. I believe that was what I read.
Dumpster enclosure.
Yeah, dumpster, okay, dumpster enclosure shall be located a minimum of 10 feet from the south boundary of the spud. Yeah. Yes. Sure, it shall be a masonry enclosure.
We good on all those?
Sure, sure.
Okay. So Commissioner Gauvain moves to recommend to City Council approval of SPD 1606, subject to technical evaluations, eliminating TE2, excuse me, technical evaluation amendments that include deleting TE2, specifying that the minimum parking requirement shall be four parking spaces, amending TE4 to require that the dumpster enclosures shall be located a minimum of 10 feet from the southern boundary of the spud and that that enclosure shall be of a masonry material.
As well as the additional TE5 of a minimum eight-foot site proof screen to the south boundary.
To the south boundary, excellent. Okay, so that was the motion from Commissioner Gauvain. Is there a second? It is not showing up on my screen. There we go. And the motion has been seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. Thank you, good luck.
Thank you. We're excited about it.
All right, we're in line for item 23.
Item 23 is case PC 10925, application to rezone 9500 West Memorial Road from AA to R2.
Is there an applicant present for item 23?
Good afternoon, Steve Rollins, Arc Engineering Consultants, Edmond, Oklahoma, representing the applicant. This is a small five-acre piece of property that the developer's asking to rezone from AA to R2, two-family. There are several R2 developments already in the area, some of them that have been approved fairly recently. So this is just another option we feel like that, that will provide a good, affordable housing for the area. So we feel like it's a good fit. There was one letter of protest received by email from Carlisle Crossing Homeowners Association. The developer, Caleb Meek, who's here, if you'd like to ask him anything directly about that, he met with the homeowners this past Tuesday to discuss their questions and concerns. A lot of their, a lot of their issues had to deal with what the duplexes would look like, materials, colors, things like that and also values of the duplexes versus their homes. But he left the meeting feel like, feeling like that it went very well and that all of the issues had been addressed. So with that, if there are any other questions, I'd be happy to answer those this time.
Thank you. This is in Ward 1. Commissioner Claire.
Yeah, I want to thank you for taking that opportunity to meet with the homeowners association, hear what they had to say. I presume, I heard that they were not going to be in attendance today.
We have two people signed up.
We do have two people signed up, okay, I'd like to hear from them, please.
Excellent. We'll begin with Tyler Thomas.
Hello, I'm Tyler Thomas. I actually bought my house from Caleb. So what he's proposing is that before we bought our house, I even asked if anything was like this was going to be built behind our house and it was told no. And now, years later, it's coming and saying that we're getting ready to have duplexes built behind our house. And like my house actually was Caleb's house and I have a sidewalk that goes from my backyard to a barn that, on the property I think he owns. And we've been, a lot of us have been trying to buy that property from him, but he wasn't, he wouldn't sell it. But we had no idea, I was, I didn't even know that they had a meeting Tuesday about this property. no idea. I was, I didn't even know that they had a meeting Tuesday about this property. Nobody even told me. And my neighbors, this actually next to me, this has the, the building where his property is actually, right, is next to us. And we didn't, we bought that house, this was our, this was our forever home. And we bought it knowing that nobody would be living back there, because it's like a, it's like a rural area, so it's, it's a good scenery behind it. And we didn't, we wouldn't have bought the house if we would have known there was going to be any duplexes or anything like that behind it. And like, man, I'm a, I'm a disabled veteran, so I don't plan on working to, I worked hard to get this house, you know? And this was my forever home for my family. And I don't, I don't want any duplexes behind it. I would love to have it the way it is, leave it alone. So that's all I have to say on the situation. But I, I was never told about a meeting or anything. This, when you guys just spoke, that they talked to people on Tuesday, me and my neighbor looked at each other. We didn't even know anything about it. And like I said, this is directly behind my house. And that's all I have to say.
Could you repeat your name and address for the record, please?
Tyler Thomas, 13609 Kestwick Lane.
And I'll respond to something you said after I hear from your neighbor that signed up to speak to. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Yen Valera. And I apologize if I mispronounced your name.
Hi, my name is Yen Valera, and I apologize for my silly look today, because I was actually working on a home before I got here. But I'm actually his neighbor, and I live right next door. And he was correct, because I did not know anything.
Yen, I'm sorry, could you, could you hold up my mic just a little bit closer? We want to make sure we can hear you.
Okay.
Okay.
So I'm Tyler's neighbor, and I live right next door, and that land is right immediately behind me. And Tyler was correct about like the meeting on Tuesday. I did not know anything about it. Have no idea. We're just a little surprised about the neighborhood meeting. And I know my husband been following a Facebook group, and there was a person that were mentioning and asking everybody in the neighborhood for the person to represent the neighborhood to come and protest if they had, if any of us has any protest to come forward, he will represent us. But I don't see the person today. And I'm glad that I showed up today, because if not, this will be passed. And I live in a neighborhood that is, my house is 550,000 at least worth, and that's the taxes that I'm paying for. Property tax, really high. I do not want any affordable duplex right behind my house, especially, it's lower the value of my home. I'm sorry, I get a little shaky, because I'm not very happy about that. And why am I paying taxes so high when there's an affordable house duplexes right behind my house? If I decided to sell my house in the future, is anybody else gonna come and say, "I'm gonna pay for your home for 500,000"? Would you, would any of you want to do that? That's my question. And then also, the view right now, we have an open view, it's really nice. Our backyard is lower, their land is higher, which is fine. I'm okay with that, because I like the view. I like to see the horses. That's the reason why we, we bought the property, because of that. And I like to see the horses and all that stuff. I don't want to go and see like affordable duplexes, houses. I own rental properties, which one of them I would just repair. I was painting, I still have paint on my arms right here, still. And from my experience, the renters, they don't keep the properties well. They don't keep the, the area well. So every time someone move out, I have to go back, repaint. Like today, I just repainted the whole entire house. The trims, I worked through the trims. The grass is a mess. So I don't want any of that.
All right.
I think that's all I have to say.
Thank you. I have one question from the applicant, for the applicant, and then I'll have a couple of comments. Are these products intended to be for sale or, or leasable?
You know, I think the developer may be the better person to ask about that. I think they will just be leased, but he could probably speak better than I could.
Okay. It really doesn't have that much significance. What I wanted to say was, first off, I wanted to respond to Mr. Thomas. I'm very sorry that you were told when you purchased your home that nothing would ever be developed behind you. We hear that almost every commission meeting, and it is just not true. We, we have talked as a commission about ways that we can work at a state level and with the real estate industry to put something in a place that would make it, that where it wouldn't be okay for you to be told that nothing can ever happen there, because chances are, if it's developable area, it's going to be developed. What we, unfortunately, the only response that we have to offer people that are told that is the only way that you are able to guarantee that it remains to exist in its current state, open field, beautiful view, is for you to purchase the property on, on their own. And I know you, you said that you attempted to do that, but it's the property owner's right to, you know, sell or not sell if he, if he sees fit. Responding to Ms. Valera's, I think those comments apply to you too. And additionally, as it, as it relates to leasable properties versus for-sale properties, there's been a number of studies done by universities and housing authorities, and there's no conclusive evidence that market-rate housing, whether it be duplex, condo, townhome, placed next to single-family lowers property values. They either remain the same, or they improve it. So I encourage you to do some research, find those studies, and hopefully that'll help address some of your concerns.
Thank you. And I, I just want to echo, it always saddens me to hear that people are told, well, nothing can happen to this land, you know? It's really sad to me that that happens, and I know, and then it's even more frustrating when you intentionally put in the effort to try to get the property, and they still don't do it. So that's very upsetting. And, but I, I understand and appreciate Commissioner Claire's comments. I think the other benefit of increasing the density in some ways is it makes the availability of amenities to the area even more possible, because there are more people who are living in the area. And I think if, I think, and I hope that now that we know that there are concerns about contact with the neighbors in the neighborhood, that you might make an effort to visit with them and hear their concerns, especially as construction may begin, regardless of whether it's, you know, I'm sure that it's going to be developed, whether it's duplexes or whether it's single-family homes. And so making sure that the neighbors are, are fully communicated with about what to expect and what the progress is, I think is, is really important, and just a kind thing to do. But I, I appreciate, again, Commissioner Claire's comments. Please.
I just had a question for the developer, if he's here. Is the developer here?
I'm here.
Mainly it's if you wanted to speak to the comments that were made by the neighbors.
I'm sorry, do I want to what?
Did you have anything you wanted to say in response to the neighbors talking about what they were told, the fact they tried to buy it, they reached out, any of that kind of thing?
I have never had anyone reach out to me to purchase the property. And, except for the Andy Wood, who's my friend I've known for years since I lived in there, since, I lived in there from 2012 to 2000, I think, 16, when his, he purchased the property. I have never met Mr. Tyler, and so I've never spoken with him before. As far as who told him what he said, I don't know. I have no idea. But I personally have never met him.
How about the timing of requesting approval to put duplexes in here instead of doing it in the past, so everybody would have known? Instead, you just now decided that's what you want to put in?
I'm sorry, I couldn't understand.
How about the timing of requesting this approval rather than doing it previously, so people would have been aware?
I think that, like I said, I've owned the property since 2012, and I've kind of waited to let things grow up around it versus trying to do something earlier. I think since the last four years and the inflation we've had with housing, I think that the affordable housing is a, something we need. You know, my houses I used to sell for 250,000, I'm selling for 350 to 400,000 now, and not making any more money than I was making before. And so I'm trying to bring something around that, you know, if I choose to sell it, that it's a more affordable housing.
Would you state your name and address for the record, please?
My name's Caleb Meek. I live 23911 Buckingham Court, Edmond, Oklahoma.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I think one of the questions from your neighbors has been about the quality of the product. So could you speak to your plans as far as the quality of the product, what you're intending to build? I think it's a very reasonable concern. If you previously had a vacant lot behind you, suddenly you're going to have development, it would be nice to be informed about the quality of the building that's going to be put behind you.
Right. You know, what we're planning on doing is some type of wood-frame structure with masonry, whether that's hardy plank, that's become very popular, is the hardy plank slash cottage farmhouse style of, you know, structure. And so we plan to do something that is not a, it's not just going to be a, you know, cheap door with a garage with a hip roof. We're going to do something that looks good and brings a premium in the, whether it's a market that we sell to or a rental market. So we, my wife won't let me build anything that's junk. She does all my design work, does my selling, she's my broker. So, you know, she does all of that. And we, we don't do low-end stuff.
Okay. Other questions from commissioners?
This is a straight zoning case too, it's not a PUD. So it's, so it's R2, goes from agriculture to R2? Yeah, so I mean, your lot sizes are still, it's not like 30-foot lots or anything? They are 30-foot lots. Oh, they are 30? Because they're for sale or leased. Oh, well, 60, but duplex is half and half. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Any other questions, comments from commissioners? Then I think we're just looking for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to recommend approval, City Council, item PC 10925.
The motion is to recommend to City Council approval of PC 10925 to City Council. I probably said to City Council twice. Is there a second? It's been seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. I would encourage you to please have some, make sure that you have the contact information for the neighbors, to keep them informed as this process goes forward. I'd also like to remind the neighbors that this is a recommendation to the City Council. The City Council will have an opportunity to vote on what we've approved today. So there will, the actions about this will continue six weeks from now at the City Council meeting. So, thank you. We're in line for item 24.
This is KC 7630, preliminary plat of Magnolia Park, located south of West Memorial Road and west of North County Line Road. That varies to section 5.3.1, point D, point V of the subdivision regulations.
Good afternoon. Steve Rollins, Arch Engineering Consultants, Edmond, Oklahoma. This is the preliminary plat for the previous zoning. As mentioned earlier, there are eight, I'm sorry, 16, I'm sorry, 18 duplex lots with one residential lot for a total of 37 lots, or 37, 37 units, 7.4 units per acre, what's shown. With the size and configuration of the property, there's a single cul-de-sac that extends basically through the middle of the property, that divides the property in half. In the staff report, the fire marshal did have an objection in there that, that was basically because there are more than 30 lots on one single entrance. His, his options were to provide a second access or fire suppression. There is basically no way to provide a second access just because there are no street stubs to the south or to the east, and no way to loop through the property. So basically, if it's approved today like this, we would come with, and plan on doing fire suppression if there are 37 units, or we, we would come back with a final plat that, that had 30 or less, if that's an option too. So, but just due to the size, there was no way to, to provide the stub, for the loop through the property. We are in agreement with the TEs. We would ask that for a variance to TE number two, which is a stub to the west. If we could go back to the aerial view, you can see that there is a large pond directly to the west, and there are also some large power lines that angle down the east side of that pond. So I think any stub that went to the west would be pretty hard to access in the future. But we would like to request the variance for that. So if there are any questions, we'd be happy to answer those.
Yeah, I don't know if I'm buying that one on the, on the stub to the west.
I, I think, I mean, looking at the depth there, you could very easily have lots that back up to your, your western boundary and with a street in front of them going out to Memorial. I think that's possible. We, we can come back to that one. I, I have a question. The, I can't say that I've ever seen a proposal for duplex, you know, this many duplex units and one single-family lot. Can you, can you tell me the intent behind that?
There was just no way to fit another duplex lot. It wasn't, the width wasn't there. So we, we made, we made it a single-family.
So if your intent is to lease these duplexes, but then you're going to sell one single-family, and I'm presuming that's that lot in the far southwest corner?
That is correct, yes.
That, yeah, very good point. That'd be a great place for a street stub, or a park space, or I just, that's one, one single-family unit. I mean, I, I understand maximizing your developable area, but just, it's going to stick out like a broken tooth, I think. And, and create, I think, just issues, real estate-wise.
We, it's in our ordinances that we want to have connectivity between neighborhoods. So I, I'm not seeing a compelling reason at this point to not grant the stub. So I would, I'm going to vote against the variance if we consider the variance. But I don't know where everyone else is on that. Yeah?
That piece of property to the west is just way too big for not, not to be at least the possibility of future connection. That's just, you know, I'm not sure how this piece got left out. So I, I don't care anything about the single-family home amid the duplexes one way or the other about that, but it'd be a nice place. It certainly allows you enough space to put a stub. So I think, you know, that'd be a good use for that land.
Yeah, that makes sense. Now, our neighbors are signed up to speak, so we are prepared to hear them on the plat as well, if they'd like to speak. And you do have five minutes to address the commission. Now, unfortunately, your comments do have to be about the plat, which is about the site layout, not the rezoning.
So with, like I said, the same thing, like how my neighbor explained, our houses, his property sits above our houses. So if he goes up, it doesn't even matter if they, if, you can go over in his lot, and he can, you can stand and look in our backyards. So if he goes up, you're going to be able to see directly inside, I mean, right in our backyard. We have no, we won't have any privacy or anything. And all of these are going to be single-family duplexes that's going up because of the spaces fall or whatever. But like I said, we don't want it. And then I, I know that the land to the west or whatever, I think it's in a trust, and they can't sell it. So I'm not sure who, who owns it, but that's just what I was told. And I have been speaking with Mr. Andy Woods, who he had talked about earlier. That's my neighbor. We even offered him $500,000 to buy this. And he, he wouldn't sell it to us. And when I, when I bought my house, he didn't show up. I bought it from him, but his dad showed up to sign the papers. So that's how we've never met. So I've been contacting the people that's been representing him, but I guess it's never got back to him, or you, or whatever, I'm sorry. But we've been trying to buy this property since I bought this house from him, but he won't sell it. And like I said, our neighborhood, our property value is starting, it was rising, going up. With this, I do believe it's going to go down tremendously. And like I said, we worked hard for our stuff. And I understand what you were saying about, you know, nothing lasts forever, and I know it's... you know, nothing lasts forever, and I know if it's land, people are going to build on it, but if, if it would have been truthful forthcoming upfront, and at least gave us a chance to make a decision on it, that would have been fine, but now that we're locked in and you, he wants to wait years later, that's not right. And, you know, that's all I got to say. I, I mean, like I said, I fought hard for this country. Like I said, I'm 100% disabled veteran, and stuff like this, it gets to me, when we work so hard in life to, to get to a certain stage in our life where we can retire, and it, it just messed up, and that's all I got to say, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Yan Valera?
Hi, I'm, sorry, I wasn't understanding the previous meeting, so was it approved to be a duplex? Is that what it was?
We recommended to the City Council that it be approved to be, the zoning to be changed to R2, which would allow for duplexes.
Okay.
So the final decision will be made by the City Council in about six weeks at their meeting.
Okay, I see, okay. So for this, I, so from the way it looks, I'm not sure, I guess I'll have a question for the builders then.
Well, ma'am, for, when you're addressing the commission, you have to address your questions to us, so if you have a separate questions for them, you can, you can go ask them when you finish your remarks for us, but just let us know what the things are that you'd like us to know about the plat.
So for those, I think it's just too many properties on those lots. Just all those lots, I'm assuming there's, each lot is one duplex? And I feel like that's, that's just way too many on there. And like again, I say before, with, I, have any of yous own any rental properties?
Do I own rental properties? I do not own any rental properties.
So do you go through and check on your tenants when you, with those rental properties?
I don't, because I don't, I don't, it's not local, so I don't manage, I don't actively manage it.
So, so someone else is managing it? So every time a tenant's moved out, how much expenses, how much money do you put into kind of keep up with it?
Well, listen, I mean, I just want to...
Well, not like...
The difference between a rental and a for-sale unit is not an issue that we're really debating here, because we can't control or mandate what someone does with, with the product that they build as far as real, as the housing. So, and I don't personally have any, I, I know there's a lot of heated feelings when it comes to, you know, renters and for-sale, but again, it's just that...
It's not within our purview as a planning commissioner to decide whether a property is going to be a rental property, or whether it's going to be a privately-held cell, sold property. And nor are we allowed to take that into consideration when we're making a decision. Now, higher density obviously lends itself to it being a higher likelihood of it being a rental property, but technically, no, we don't make our decisions based on whether it's going to be rented, whether it's going to be privately sold.
And when you, when you see the lines on this drawing, it's, so it's one unit on each side of those lines, there's not two on each one.
Two on one?
Yeah, just so you know, they're, they're 30-foot lots, there's going to be two lots, one duplex.
Okay, so if, if it's get approved, which I got a feeling like everybody is kind of pro for it, my request is it needs to be a luxury apartment or duplexes, just so it keep up with our values, our property, just because I don't want them to be like affordable, it becomes rentals, and I'm paying, again, going back to the taxes, I'm paying...
Because we're on the preliminary plat, we can't make any of that decision anyways on what they look like, and it's a straight zoning, so we don't really have any control on what they will build there.
So, so, sorry?
It just has to meet the zoning code for R2.
I completely agree with your sentiment, so, and that's why we were, we were asking the applicant, you know, what, tell us about the product, because we want the best, best housing stock on the market available for people, and we want it to be consistent with the, the fabric of the neighborhood, surrounding neighborhoods, and, and we very much hope that, that these, these folks that are applying here will, will follow through with that.
So basically, once it's approved, they can just build anything they want to, like a 300,000 or 200,000 duplexes?
Yeah, the price wouldn't matter, and they have to meet the current zoning for R2.
Assuming that it gets approved, we only decide what the proper land use is, so the use, but not, we don't make the decisions about, the property owner is going to make those decisions about what materials get used, how the ultimate quality, the ultimate cost, that ultimate investment is not within our purview. In a, in a case like this one, where they're requesting, we're asking, they're asking for the ability to be able to create duplexes on this property. We don't have the ability to tell them what materials, how much it's going to cost, any of those things.
Okay, okay, I guess I don't really have any other comments then. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
So I want to come back to the variance. I think, I think it's safe to say that we want the street stub, and we're not going to grant the variance, so are you agreeable to that?
Yeah, we'll, we'll do the stub to the left.
I believe that would probably help you with your 30 lots or less to avoid fire suppression also.
And actually, I asked that question to the fire marshal, and it does not, until it's actually tied on to as an access point, so.
Well, I'm saying that you're taking lots, the, the number of lots down.
As far as reducing the numbers, yeah, got you, okay, yeah.
Okay.
Sure.
So if there's no further discussion, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Commissioner Claire?
I'll move approval of item C 7630, subject to the technical evaluations.
Commissioner Claire moves C 7630, subject to the technical evaluations. The motion's been seconded by Commissioner Powers, please cast your votes. And the motion passes. We're now in line for item 20, oh, excuse me, we're in line for item 14, we're going to, we missed item, we missed item 14, sorry about that. We missed 14, we're going to come back to 14.
Item 14 is case SPUD 1605, application to rezone 3305 Northwest 190 Second Street from SPUD 1194.
Dean Colletta, Sibley Environmental Consultants, 4700 Glady Parkway. Sorry, the applicant's representative could not make it, so he just, I called the owner, he, he wanted me to represent him for this case. So for this deal, you know, it's an existing PUD, and basically they're requesting that additional uses be required or be allowed for this. I think there's been some outreach on some potential businesses there that did not meet the original PUD, so they're reaching out to, could reason on this eastern portion, so they can allow some additional uses that would allow for the market conditions and some of the businesses that are coming in, so.
Okay, this is in Ward Eight, Commissioner Noble?
I didn't have anything really on this. Again, it doesn't, the city's decided not to allow service on it, you know that?
Correct, yeah, we're aware of that, yes, sir.
I've got no issues there. Any other questions from commissioners? We have no one signed up to speak. We're just looking for a motion, Commissioner Noble?
I'd like to recommend approval of SPUD 1605.
Commissioner Noble moves to recommend to City Council approval of SPUD 1605. The motion's been seconded by Commissioner Meek, please cast your votes.
Thank you.
Motion passes, thank you. We're in line for item 25.
Item 25 is case PC 10914, application to rezone 11221 West Hefner Road from R1 to R2.
Hello, everybody, I'm Cory Peacock with Peacock Design, here on behalf of the applicant. He's also here as well, so if you guys have any questions later, he'd be more than happy to answer them. We are requesting to rezone about 13 and a half acres here on Lussein Road and Hefner Road from R1 to R2. I, again, more than happy to answer any questions, provide more details about, you know, the design or what we're planning on doing, so just let me know.
Commissioner Claire?
Thank you. Ms. Peacock, I know we've had some conversations. One of the big things that, that I asked of you was to meet with the neighbors. That was scheduled a couple Fridays ago. I was not able to attend, but I understand that was not a terribly productive meeting. Can you just give a brief recap of some of the, the major items?
That is correct, and I actually was unable... Me? Am I close enough?
Now you are.
Okay, sorry. I was unable to attend as well, but the developers did hold the meeting for them, so I can either give you the synopsis, or I can let one of them speak to it, but I, I was informed of.
I think, I think you know the general list, just bullet items, what are the major concerns?
Bullet items is obviously, we opened the meeting for everybody to come to voice their concerns and to address the citizens' complaints, and also just to provide some more information on the development that we are planning on doing. Mr. Cypress and Mr. Miller were there to provide this information, and it just, it was, like Commissioner Claire said, not very productive. The developers were not allowed to speak to the points that they would like to, it was, became more of a screaming match, and it just had to end abruptly because concerns of safety became a factor.
So there has not been an actual conversation between the, the developer and the neighbors because the meeting did not go well?
Well, the meeting was about an hour, an hour and a half long, but just not a lot happened, and not a lot was allowed to happen.
And, and I know Councilman Carter was present, I spoke with Councilman Carter, he offered to facilitate another meeting, and I, I don't believe that that was ever, that ever came to be.
Okay. Okay. This is straight zoning, I'll remind the commissioners, we, this is straight zoning request, so either R1 to R2. So the question for us is, do we want, do we think that a meeting, you know, I'm a strong proponent of community conversations, but I'm a strong proponent of productive community conversations. If neighbors cannot be moved and applicants cannot be moved, then there is no point in further, then you're asking, you're at our, it's our decision to make at that point. I prefer strongly that people find a way to work together and come up with consensus and move forward that way, so it's you, you deciding how you would like for this zoning issue to be resolved, rather than us deciding. But, sounds like, please.
Well, I want to start, so I, I know a number of the, the issues are kind of outside of, of our authority. Obviously, we've received a lot of letters, I've read them, and we're going to hear from, from the folks that signed up. I have a few statements that I'd like to make that'll hopefully kind of guide our conversation.
Please.
So I'd like to start with that, and then we can hear from, from the neighbors. So one of the items that I heard was the loss of recreation space and the loss of school pickup areas. And first and foremost, I want to let you guys know that I've designed parks and trails and recreation spaces for 25 years, so this is something that's near and dear to me. I want to acknowledge your frustration and the potential loss of those, because parks play a vital role in our neighborhoods. I think what's important to emphasize to all of you is that while you may have had access to this, it is not a public park space. I'm very familiar with Oklahoma City's 105 neighborhood and community parks. This is not one of them. So this is land that is privately owned and not designated as a public park. So it kind of harkens back to my previ, the previous case, where the only way to guarantee that it continues to operate in the way that it does is for the homeowners association or the school to purchase it. And that's, has not occurred, so. Secondly, I want to talk a little about street infrastructure. We see this on a lot of cases, almost every week, where roads, utilities are not ideal for development. And it would be incredible if the city had the resources to go in and make those upgrades prior to development coming along. That's just not the system that we have to work with. It's a, it's a, unfortunately, a reactionary system. New development, new rooftops bring additional tax revenue, voting constituents to, to areas, and that's often what drives those improvements, the squeaky wheel gets the grease. In, in regards to the school pickup, it is highly unfortunate that the UConn Public Schools have not done a better job with the site design of their school, or their organization of their pickup. The fact that they must use Oklahoma City Public Right-of-Way in order to queue vehicles and parents and all that is, I mean, that's, if you ask Oklahoma City Public Works and the Traffic Department, that is not, not good with them. So from, from a school standpoint, I mean, that, that is outside of our, of our purview. And then the last thing I want to mention is, is that this property is currently zoned R1, and the applicant could, if they wanted to walk across the street to Building Services right now, and they could submit a single-family home development plat that would net 65 homes. They wouldn't have to do a thing, they wouldn't have to notify neighbors or anything, they could go build 65 homes right now. Rezoning to this R2 is going to create 90 duplex units. That's 25 more than what they could do as-is. So I think from a comparison standpoint, that's just something to note, so. That's, that's what I have right now, I'm excited to hear from, from folks, and so if you want to call the first...
Any other questions from commissioners before I do? Okay. First, we have, and I apologize, Seija Malmkar, and I apologize if I pronounced it wrong, I, I really do. Hey, you see my name right over here, it's like I get called camel, I get called all kinds of things, so I understand it.
Seija, Cheetah, I get it all. CJ Ha from Surrey, so, good morning, good afternoon, it feels like it's been a morning and an afternoon. My name is CJ Malmkar, I am the Vice President of Surrey Hills HOA Number One. Our, we actually, we received a letter, our green belts back border the property, all of our houses are, you see right there on 109th, all of those are in our HOA. I just wanted to, you're going to hear a lot today, we have some individuals that have really done research and stats, but I'm not here to talk to you about that. I'm here to talk to you about, as a mother. I live on 111th, so we are within walking distance of the school. I've had two children, I've lived in Surrey Hills for 11 years. In Surrey Hills, I understand that it's just a neighborhood in Oklahoma City to many people. I personally believe it's the best neighborhood in the state, that is what I believe. I don't know of another neighborhood that gathers and supports and just has a sense of community the way that we have. I think that the landowners, it's been amazing that they've allowed the neighborhood to utilize this space as a park and as a place for us to gather. We do annual water balloon battles, we do all kinds of stuff, softball fields, and as neighbors, we've, we've also tried to help upkeep this property, the mowing, the weed eating. I can tell you, I have personally been on this property multiple times, weed eating and mowing myself. I do not own a, I own a coffee shop. So, but that's part of neighbors loving neighbors and loving our community. This space, I, we are well aware that this is zoned, a single-family residence, we knew that, all of us knew that when we bought our homes. The problem is, right now, Surrey Hills Elementary School, I have a son that graduated, was in Surrey Hills in 2020 as a third grader. I now have a son as a kindergartner in 2024, this is not the same school, unfortunately. It's amazing teachers, it's an amazing program, it is unsafe. My son scores a level three on his benchmarking, is two grade level. He has scored a level five, which is an advanced grade level, all throughout the year, and he fell asleep last month during his benchmarking. They were able to let him retake it, he scored a level one, which as you know, that has a ripple effect in our community and on our city and on our funds. He scored low because my son, as a kindergartner, is one of the fortunate kindergartners that has his lunch break at 10:30 a.m., unlike some of the students who eat their lunch at 9:45 in the morning. So my son, who's a kindergartner, eats at 10:30, and that's it, to get through the rest of the day, through, because there are so many students in this school... through, because there are so many students in this school. The classrooms are so overcapacity. My son has 23 students other than him in his class. It is, it has created just this bizarre environment, and I understand that, yes, tax, as we build more, we get more tax dollars, we can do more. But at some point, we have to do hard things and make hard decisions to protect our kids. Every day, I am there to walk my son home and to walk him to school. And every day, I pray that we don't have a catastrophe because the traffic is insane. Right now, the open on the east side, that is kind of used that all the walkers, I know it's not their right to do so, this isn't a public place, but right now, it is the safe place that all the walkers can walk home to. Because on the street, you guys, there's no visibility. A four-year-old is going to run in front of my car, and I'm going to live with that for the rest of my life. I am, I am very appreciative of the landowner allowing our neighborhood to use this. I understand that he can build single-family residences tomorrow. I don't want that until our schools can handle that. But I do want Surrey Hills to grow. I think, like I said, it's the best neighborhood. I believe in diversity and I believe in equity. And I would love to see affordable housing, because Surrey Hills is such an amazing place, but not at the cost of putting our kids in danger. And if you don't believe it's a dangerous situation, I would just, would like to invite any of you, before you make a decision like this, just come between the hours of 6:30 and 7:30 a.m. and stand on either, any part of either one of those lots. Do the same thing from 2:00 to 3:00 p.m. You will see, I am there to walk my son. There are so many children who don't have an adult with them, to say, stop, there's a car coming. It is unbelievable. And while I welcome growth and I welcome development, I do ask that this remains residential for a single-family home, because while 25 may not sound like a lot to you, sir, 25 homes with three kids is 75 students. We just got our precayers back into the school. Next year, even if we can find a place for those precayers to go off-site, just with the new developments we have coming all around us that aren't right across the street from this school, we're, even if we got rid of 200, we've got 300 more coming. We can't keep doing this. This is an unsafe situation. Just give it a little time. Let our children, let our schools, I understand Surrey hasn't done a great job, but they were, this was such a small neighborhood even five years ago. It's comparing apples to oranges. We have to give them time, and they are building more schools. You saw that in the letter that you received from our superintendent. But right now, this isn't about development. I understand that they can development, develop it tomorrow. I also understand that the landowner has great grandchildren that go to this school. So I would hope that maybe we could, if we could just hold until those bonds come to be able to build another school to support this. I mean, it just makes sense to me, because any construction right now will take an already dangerous situation, and it could easily turn into a tragedy. And I couldn't have that on my heart without coming and saying something. I don't like drama, I don't like conflict. I did not like the meeting. I was there, it wasn't a good meeting, sir, I will tell you that. And it's very sad that it had to go that way, but it it was, it didn't do any good. This decision is going to have to be on you. And I want you to know that I will respect, I respect your authority and your position, and I don't want your job, I can't imagine having it, and I will respect that. But it would be so wrong for me not to come up and try to stand up for my son, who's a kindergartner, and all those other students and teachers who are parked on both sides of the street, because they don't even have room to park themselves. So even the teachers parking on the street along Hefner and Hastings, it's, it's just, there's no, we can't, there's no solution right now. So I understand that your only job is whether this goes to R2 or stays R1. 25 may not sound like a big deal. It can be life-changing. So thank you for your time, I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Next, we have James Dwea.
Also, it's Dewey.
Dewey, okay, I apologize.
Thank you for the opportunity of presenting today. I'll be brief. My name is James Dewey. I live, or my residence, which I just moved out of a couple of months ago, is located at 11224 Northwest 109th Street. That house was built in 1983, and I lived there for 39 years since 1984. So I've seen all of the development that's occurred in and around the Surrey Hills development and the subject property. I looked at the packet today, this morning, before I came here, and I have two previous submissions to the council, and I saw those included. I did make a submission on March 3rd by email with an attached letter that I did not see, and I respectfully request that that be entered into the system. Is that possible?
Yeah, we can receive it.
Okay, when I moved in there in 1984, there was nothing, no residences on the south side of Hefner Road. It was open field, it was farmland. And over the years, thank, thanks in part to the development of the Kilpatrick, which is a great feeder for that area. Lots of development sprung up, and I've seen the increase in rainwater runoff as each development was built. And it comes right into the drain, natural drainage area that runs through the middle of the subject property, right into my backyard. The water is, has approached my fence many times in all but just the lightest rains. So my main concern is that we look at the drainage coming off of those areas when you put that amount of housing in there, the concrete, because I've seen it increase over the years because of the additional housing that's on the south side of Hefner Road. All of that area is at higher elevation than my property and the natural drainage ditch that is directly behind my residence. I'm going to defer the rest of my time to someone else who's speaking, and I know she'll cover all of my other concerns, so. Thank you for that.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Lisa Wheeler. Okay. Next, I have Michelle Heffron.
Thank you. I defer my time to Michelle.
Okay. Next, I have Carrie Largent.
Lager.
Lager.
I defer my time to Michelle.
Excellent, okay. Erin Coats. Okay, Jim Stags. Great. Billy Hughley. I apologize if I mispronounced your name. Great. And then, wait, let me, before I get to, you're Michelle, right? Okay. Let's make sure. Tracy. Brittany Pollard. Great. Debbie Nuland. I apologize if I got that wrong. Great. Okay. Michelle.
Hi, guys. My name is Michelle Henley. I live at 11100 Northwest 109th Street. My house is directly behind the daycare, which is just to the east of this proposed development. I have utmost respect for the commissioners, the landowner, everyone. I know that at any time, he can come build single-family houses. And I do echo what CJ said. 25 houses may not seem like a lot to you guys, but I walk my daughter to school every morning. And if you ask me why I take my cellphone with me, it's because I've personally almost seen the crossing guard get hit by traffic on way more than occasions that I want to count. And I have had to think about if I'm going to have to call 911. The road out there, they don't have crossing lights or anything. The paint on the crosswalk is even peeling off. So it is, it is a concern. I did compile some facts about the school. I know that you guys said that it's not in your scope, but as taxpayers and citizens of Oklahoma, I feel like I want to present a few facts. Surrey Hills Elementary is the third-largest school right now in UConn School District, only behind the high school and the middle school. The student population has already grown by 26% since 2019. The school is at 100% capacity with 800 students. It's already projected to grow to 1,200 students due to all the other development in the area. They added nine additional classrooms, all of them are already full. Some classes currently have, as I've heard, and I can't substantiate this, as many as 25 to 26 students. The current state average for students is 16 to 1. Our school is currently 22 to 1. There is a teacher shortage, as you all are aware of. There's also a substitute shortage. When there are no substitutes, they split the classes up, and half the students go here and half the students go there. So that makes the class size bigger. And what CJ said, pre-K lunch does start at 9:45. My daughter went to pre-K there, and I'm very well aware of this. They get 20 minutes for lunch, and it starts at 9:45. There is not enough room in the school's parking lots. The teachers have to park along Hefner, which is right on the side of this development, which, as CJ said, it causes visibility issues. There's no lights, there, the crosswalk. The PTA did finally buy the crossing guard a lighted sign, because as you know, last week, on Sunday, the time changed. We are now walking to school in the dark. It's so dark that on certain days when I'm walking my daughter, we use the Star app to look at the planets on our way to school. It's a dangerous situation if they can't see you, and there's so much traffic and cars lined up across the street. Again, it's the, I know it's the school's issue, that they did not build this school in a very good manner, but there's so many kids at this school, 800 students, that if you line up in the car line, even if you're there on time, it's, you may not get your student to class on time because it's physically impossible to get through the car line. I also want to note that the daycares in the area are also full. I found out this morning that my daughter, who has gone to the daycare in the neighborhood, the daycare has been sold to the school. Which, great, that's pretty much robbing Peter to pay Paul. Now my daughter doesn't have a daycare. And from what I understand, the daycare is about a mile away from the school. My daughter had to go to pre-K at Redstone Intermediate, which was not at the school. I don't know how to explain it, but she was away, she was with third graders. She was away from the school. She didn't get to participate in the school activities that the other school gets to participate in. This is a Band-Aid situation if the daycare was sold to the school, because I don't see how they can fit the entire daycare, entire pre-K population into the daycare. And again, now, like I said, my daughter has no daycare to go to. And she was on the waitlist for the summer program. So that's kind of where I'm at with the school. Does anyone have any questions about that before I move on? Okay. And again, I'm, I'm new to this, I'm learning the process. And I put a lot of these facts together. It's my understanding that there should be a traffic study done every three years, and there hasn't been one done on Hefner since 2018. I would ask that if this does go through, that a traffic study is, proper traffic study is done on that intersection.
I'll go ahead and just ask this question. I don't believe we can require a traffic study, or can we? Do we have that authority?
We, technically, we, you do. We haven't done that as a matter of course, since impact fees were passed. I don't know, perhaps you're referring to traffic counts? That the city does?
Traffic counts, yeah. I mean, I don't know if that's a factor, but, I mean, the traffic out there hasn't been proper, as far as I can tell, hasn't been properly counted in, since 2018. The traffic is so crazy at that intersection during the morning that the principal of the school is the traffic director. Roads are not resurfaced. We have been in contact with our councilman. It's my understanding that he's trying to get it on the 2025 bond for 2027. That's a ways out. We've been trying to get them fixed forever. That, I watched your meeting from the 22nd, and you guys did talk about, so maybe you have been out there, the roads are awful. I'll just leave it at that. The traffic on north of Hefner, in between the two areas, is where I'm most concerned about, because I live on 109th. If there's more traffic, it could create a bottleneck on that part of the road. And if there was some sort of emergency where emergency services needed to get through, that is a concern for me, because I personally live up there. The other thing is, and I don't know if this really matters, but there is a deputy out there who watches traffic. He's a Canadian County Sheriff, and I have been told by him and the school that because he is Canadian County and it's Oklahoma City jurisdiction, that he can watch people's speed, he can do whatever, and he cannot write tickets. Because I personally stood with him when he comments on people speeding, and he cannot do anything. So I would ask that if this goes through, what Oklahoma City plans on doing to provide resources to monitor the traffic by the school? I'm going to skip to the OG&E part. I know, and I'm not very versed on this, but our neighborhood suffers from really bad power flashes and power surges. A lot of us have lost, I've never lost so many appliances until I lived in this neighborhood. It's so bad that I, the only phone number I have on my desk, because I personally work from home, is the number to OG&E so I can report power flashes. So this is a concern to me. I did check the OG&E website, OG&E website, and they have a map of everything they're planning to improve. There's nothing in our area. And I included a screenshot of that. So I would ask that if this goes through, like, what are the plans to address these power issues in our area? Okay. One other thing here. Sorry. I was able to, the plat that I was, that I was able to get ahold of through the Oklahoma Planning Commission website, I counted 644 families going up around our area, not counting this. That doesn't include the 74 additional homes you just approved in item agenda number one this morning, earlier. So that's, brings a total to 728 homes for families going up in our area, not counting this. If you look at the map and you scroll out from it, this is the smallest space of all the spaces that are being developed around us. Our neighborhood cannot handle this, especially directly across the street from the school. And then I also want to address the drainage issues that my neighbor addressed. Since I do live behind the daycare, I will tell you there is a natural slope to this field. Because the daycare was built there, our yard floods every single time it rains. We had to build a cement wall, retaining wall, around our property to keep the runoff out from our yard. So my question is to you, if you build single-family or... So my question is to you, if you build single-family or multifamily, who's, who's looking out for that? Because when I looked at the plat, I didn't see any potential area that would address the drainage behind the houses butted up against to the existing houses.
We'll, we'll have, we'll have Barry, after your comments are finished, we'll have Barry come explain how this would work regardless of whether this rezoning is approved or not, what the process would look like around.
Right. In the west field, there is a creek that goes through the field, or they're calling it, um, a riparian. I would like to know why every other creek in our neighborhood is deemed a flood zone except for that creek, even though our neighbors have personally witnessed it flood into their yard. The last time a s- a flood study was done was two thousand eight. So that's a question as to what would be addressed to that. And, yeah. Sorry, I'm, I'm just still a little nervous. Um, yeah. All the other creeks in our neighborhood are deemed flood zones except for that one. And the other ones drain into that one. So it's my understanding that maybe they didn't finish the flood study. I'm not versed on how that works. Um, and then lastly, I am very aware that the landowner has let the neighborhood use the, um, the property as a ball field. And that is his right to, to say that's no longer going to be a ball field. But I will tell you that Ward One has the least amount of green space that of any wards in OKC, and that came directly from Bradley Carter. Maps currently doesn't have any planned green space or improvements for our area, which I have linked on the map in my email. Um, I also checked the twenty-twenty OKC Parks Master Plan, which also denotes there's no parks near our area. There's no plans for parks. Also, in the twenty-twenty OKC Parks Master Plan, there is a significant need for ball fields, which they have laid out thirty-four Little League ball fields are needed by twenty-thirty-four. If you take away this ball field, and again, I know it's his decision, but the people that do play there have nowhere to go. So, again, as a homeowner there, I would at least the least amount of homes that could be built as possible. But I think the majority of our neighborhood would like to see it as is. But again, that's out of our, that's really the, the landowner's decision. So. I think that's all I have. If anybody has any questions.
Does anybody have any questions? And thank you.
Uh, I do have one. On the, uh, letter from the superintendent of Yukon Public Schools, he makes a statement that says the other really concerning issue would be traffic as we anxiously await the final inspection of the new loop. What does that mean?
They are building a loop behind the school. I don't understand, and be- I'm not very close to it. I don't understand how the loop is going to help the traffic because what it's basically gonna do, because I've gone and looked at it, is it's gonna make everybody go into a single file line versus right now it's a double lane. So I really don't understand how they're saying that that's going to help the situation.
Do you believe that, do you believe that loop will be back behind the school?
It's behind the school.
Okay, so it'll take quite a few cars?
But they're still gonna funnel back out onto the main roads.
They'll go in, but they'll come out, but maybe at a faster rate, I would hope.
I think it'll be, yeah. I don't understand how.
They're trying something at least because a lot of this problem is their problem. Right? I know you guys have to live with it, but this is a Yukon school issue. Um, my only other question was, is had Yukon Schools or Surry Hills HOA, number one, two, three, four, whatever, has anyone ever tried to buy those fields? Uh, either as a school entity or as an HOA?
We ha- I, as far as I know, we haven't, the HOA hasn't tried to buy them. I heard that the school tried to buy them and it was denied, but I can't substantiate that or, or prove that. So I don't even know. Yeah. No idea.
I was just curious.
I'm just a mom looking out for my kids in my neighborhood, learning this process.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, commissioners?
Well, I, I sympathize with these concerns and, and, and I agree that a lot of this is traffic management and school management issues, but, yeah, I mean, you just zoom out on the map and you look at this spot and like, it should be green space. From a neighborhood perspective, green space is right, but I can't force the, you know, we can't force the, the landowner to sell it to the school or to sell it to the HOA and, and that, that's out of our control, but it sure would be nice if it was a green space for the neighborhood.
Make sure that more houses don't go in than what it's already zoned for.
I, I appreciate you at that point, certainly.
And, and I'd say the same thing. I, I think R one would be a better use for this, I mean, for the neighborhood. But when I see the green space, there's green space around the school, this property's gonna be developed. That, that's just the way it is. There's green space. It's like asking the golf course to say, well, just stop playing golf and let's make that a green space. You can't just do that. You have to own the property. And, and so most of the things that you said are either traffic, which is really not in our purview. Yukon Schools problems, definitely not in our purview and definitely for, for Yukon.
I definitely agree with that. I just.
The electrical grid, again, O G and E, not really in our purview. So, again, there's pockets of R two all over Surry Hills.
I agree.
Another pocket is another pocket. We, I've, I've been a commissioner for about a year and a few months. We've approved thousands of new lots in Ward One for these schools. To be here today and to try to stop ninety more units is, is just, again, they own the property.
I do think it's important to clarify this as I was discussing with council. Now, traffic and schools can be a, can be a factor, but we are limited in our ability to use that as, as a scope. As you know, our decisions are challengeable in a court, so, um, they cannot be arbitrary. They can't be capricious. So we have to have, you know, evidence that meets those standards, which is difficult for us, even me as an attorney, to, to do, um, in our hearings. So it's always important for us to look at how the infrastructure is impacted and see if there are ways in which we can, um, mitigate any challenges that may be created by our zoning decisions. Um, so that's a nuanced answer, but it's.
And I think I have brought that up many times as we've approved subdivisions in, in Ward One through here because I have driven through here in the morning and seen the sheer number of cars and, and kids. And I just wonder, like, no one must ride the bus to these schools because every parent drives their car to, their kids to school in the car.
What's really funny about that is, um, the, the situation with buses is such that, of course, this is not, this is a Yukon school, not an Oklahoma City school, but, um, people who live close enough to a school, um, that they can either walk or have a parent drop them off, or they're not eligible to ride the bus. So, I mean, that's not always an option. And I, you know, I actually own property in Surry Hills that I've owned since the very early eighties. Um, until last year, my brother and his wife lived on Folkstone just north of the school. And what Mr., um, Dewey was saying is absolutely true. When I, when we bought our property out there, um, there was anything uh, south of Hefner Road, but open fields and farmland and, you know, ranchland. Um, and Surry Hills itself was sort of, sort of, um, promoted. I mean, there, there are definitely family homes, very definitely family homes, but it was kind of a retirement community almost. Um, and in fact, that was why we brought the prop- we bought the property was because my parents eventually wanted to, um, retire close enough that my father could play golf every day. That was his one big retirement wish. Um, so I think, you know, it's easy now, twenty-twenty hindsight, and the, um, benefit of the development that's gone on since, to say that the school is poorly designed and so on. There probably are, it, it probably is designed just like other schools were designed at the time it was designed. This was a sleepy little area. Uh, the school's probably hardly up to capacity. Um, everybody could either walk or ride their bike. It was, it was, there weren't traffic issues. There weren't, uh, these problems. It wasn't overcrowded. Um, and, and so, I mean, I, I do think it is within our purview to take into consideration both traffic and the impact on schools. It's not something we do very often. Uh, but you know, this is a situation where we're being asked to change the zoning from one thing to another. Uh, it's not like if we say no, they're not gonna be able to develop it. It's a question of whether it's gonna be this number of bill of homes or this number of homes. Um, I, I'm going to be very hard pressed to vote yes for this, this, um, application. In fact, I should say it the other way around. I, I cannot imagine myself voting yes for this application. It's just either it's too soon or it's too late. I'm not quite sure which. If, uh, I also would have to confess that until this application came along, I didn't know that those ball fields were not park space. They've always been there. So the, the shock factor for the people who actually use them and, and are used to having them there, I can well understand. But the impact, the, I mean, the development impact is, is very real. And yes, the schools are always behind that curve. It's just the way school funding works and all that kind of stuff. And sooner or later, hopefully, that will balance out. I also have had the unique experience of attending a school where I only went to school half day because the school was so crowded. So nine forty-five lunch, I get that. This is not a good way for kids to try to learn, so, um, I'm gonna have a hard time approving any upgrade in the R one zoning that already exists for this piece of property, so.
Makes a lot of sense. Um, any other, any other questions?
I have two questions, actually. I've actually heard, because I've only lived in this neighborhood since, neighborhood since two thousand eighteen, that it has been tried to be developed before and it's always fallen through. So I'm curious if anybody knows why it would have not gone through previously?
I don't recall, in, I've been on the commission six years. I don't recall voting on.
I've been on it a long time. I've never been aware of it.
Okay. Also, if you were to vote yes on this, I would want to know, like, what benefit you feel like this would bring to our neighborhood, just from your point of view? If anybody wants to speak to that.
Speak to that? Well, I think we'll have an opportunity for us to exchange ideas and we can keep that question in mind. Anything else for us?
I don't think so. Does anybody else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for serving our community. I, I love it in Oklahoma City.
Thank you. As promised, Berry Lodge, would you mind sharing your wisdom on, um, how we review how the city of Oklahoma City, because this is not gonna be the developer's decision, this is the city of Oklahoma City, the professional civil engineers who do this work? Would you mind explaining what goes into those decisions around, um, drainage when new development comes? As this area definitely, I'm sure, has issues with flooding as the, we saw in letters and, and have heard about.
Yep, Berry Lodge, Public Works. Uh, I'll address a few things here that, new questions were brought up. I'll, I'll hit, just real briefly on the, on the traffic study side of it. I'm not the expert on that, but just a comment that in years past, developers were required to do traffic studies when new developments came in and would impact it. A few years ago, and I don't know what prompted that, the requirement for traffic studies to be done by developers was dropped in favor of traffic impact fees that the developers pay when they do the development. City uses that for traffic studies, traffic intersection improvements and that kind of thing. So again, that's the limit of my knowledge on that, so, uh, but, but that's kind of what goes on with that.
I, I want to speak to that. We do have the ability to require traffic analysis of a developer. What changed was we stopped requiring traffic studies automatically. So it's not an automatic requirement. It used to be. But it is still something that we can require when we feel the need of it.
So what, because, so maybe Barry or, or Janice at this point, um, explaining what that, what would that mean? Let's say we did that, then, then what happens?
That's engineering stuff.
Besides the study itself, like, how does that impact the, the rezoning request? Because I'm certain what our neighbors would love to hear is, oh, they're gonna do a study. Oh, they're gonna see how bad it is and, oh, then that means the development's not gonna go through. I don't want to give that impression. I, I want to be clear about what, what it means.
And unfortunately, I think at, at this point in it, the, the tra- any traffic study that they did would be looking at the impact of their development only. And it wouldn't take into account the other developments that have been done in the past that when you look at this overall, that's where the problem is created, has been from previous developments. And so what they would show would be, what's the impact to their, from their development only? Which would, I don't know exactly what it's gonna do. Again, I'm not the traffic expert, but it's gonna show probably a very small impact overall. Would there be some? Yes, there would. The extent of that, I don't even want to get, I, I'm much better talking about drainage than traffic.
I, I think that's a fair, um, analysis. And, and in it, to be fairer, um, it would, it would actually be a, an, an, an impact of the request of the application. So the difference between R one and R two. Not, you know, the difference between it sitting empty.
Right, absolutely, yes. Which, which means that difference is gonna be limited, but.
One other thing, if I could make it, just to interject one thing here too, and, and Sarah kind of reminded me of this. At this point, because it's already zoned R one, really the only impact that they would have to show in the traffic study is the difference between R one and R two.
Yeah.
And so now we've even diminished that further.
And so, maybe point out too, that historically, um, so with, when we, the commission would require traffic studies, uh, it was with a P U D where you could, you know, you can condition, the developers would then build uh, traffic lights and so on or, or other needed infrastructure. Right now, the city has taken on all that burden. Uh, this is a straight zone, first of all. Uh, but the city has taken on the burden of doing the traffic studies, which there exists one for this larger area, and also building the infrastructure. So even if there were a, a traffic study done, uh, we don't necessarily, we don't, these days then take those and require a developer to build infrastructure. Because they, they are doing, they're fulfilling their obligation through the impact fees.
Right. So that's why I bring that up. I will move on from traffic, if that's okay?
Not, not for this. That's not what, that's not their purpose.
Uh, the other question that came up, uh, was talking about the flood zones in, in the area and why some creeks have designated as flood zones, some are not. That was, the, uh, determination was actually made in the early seventies by FEMA when they came in and, and did these studies. In, as a general rule, it's been, it's based on the drainage basin that flows through that particular creek. And that threshold for the study for FEMA wa- was around six hundred acres. So if drainage basin that comes through the middle of this property, just in looking at it on the aerial photograph, looks like it's pretty small, which would, would be why that particular creek that comes through the property turns to the west and then goes north along Mustang Road, wouldn't have been included in, as a FEMA flood zone. As opposed to the one that looks like it's over to the east of this property, looks like it's probably a fairly substantial creek and probably is a FEMA mapped flood zone. But that's, that's where that threshold comes in, uh, as far as having a mapped FEMA flood zone. If that all makes sense. The third thing I wrote down on here was the drainage requirements. So this development, it comes in, whether it is as, as a single family or as the duplex uh, development, would have to comply with chapter sixteen of our drainage ordinance. That has some various requirements. Uh, this area, and I, I did not get to check it before I came over, I do not believe it falls within the area currently, uh, currently delineated as our detention required area. Developer could, I mean, has that as option? That may be something that he chooses to do. Uh, could, uh, dedicate some space for detention, but at this point, that's not, uh, one of the, the things that's required. They would have to provide the drainage facilities to come from the south, across the property to the north. to come from the south, across the property to the north, and, and take that, that across their property, excuse me, without directing an increased flow onto one of the neighbor properties. Now, they could, that doesn't mean they have to provide the detention. They may have to direct it a different direction on their property and over towards the natural flow along Mustang, Mustang Road, excuse me, to keep that from going over onto the neighboring properties and, and increasing, that there may be some water that goes there now. They would not be able to increase that and, and damage that property.
So, let's wait, Barry. Because that's an important point for our neighbors to understand. So, the city's review, am I hearing you correctly? That the city's review is going to look at the current level of flooding, drainage issues. So, if it's, if water is naturally rising to a certain level currently, okay, in these existing fields?
Yes.
The obligation of the property owner, the developer, is to make sure that it doesn't get worse or create any problems for the neighbors nearby. It just, they can't make it worse.
Right. We're going to look at that and, and so that they're not increasing the flow onto those individual lot owners. We are, we are not going to look at it to see if they are increasing the total discharge off of their property. Again, this is, it, it gets into a lot more than, than the engineering side of it. If, if they have a, a property that has some water running across it now and they increase that flow by this development, they're opening cells up to the, to litigation on that side of it that.
They being the developer.
You're going to be, are better about that part than I am. But that's what we're going to be looking, looking at. We'll make recommendations on their plans. But again, our limitation as far as the engineering review is going to be sure that it complies with the requirements of the current drainage ordinance. That's, that's kind of our, our guideline that, that we have to follow.
Sidewalks. Sidewalks would be required on the major arterials as a part of the, if this development were to happen. So, I think, on one hand, that's a, that's a pro for the, some of the safety issues, but I'm also wondering how that works with drainage. So, it's all swales along, at least the northern, the western piece of this property. It's like drainage swales next to Hefner. And then, that's where that water's being funneled to, across the field, it looks like. And then, if you have to put sidewalks in, I don't know what all that looks like, but I guess that's what develop, that's what you guys do when you develop. But.
Yeah. And you can comment on that. And the sidewalks have to be ADA compatible.
Yeah. And the, and the current sidewalk design that, that the city's requiring is, say, if there is a swale or we've got some drainage that is going to go under a sidewalk, that it has to be built with a sidewalk bridge. So, you know, previously, we would ramp the sidewalks down into the flume and, and the water would just be flowing across sidewalk. That has changed. And so, except in rare occasions, we require the sidewalk bridge. Now, with a lot of, with this sidewalk that's going to be, especially across Hefner Road where that drainage is coming from the south, they're going to have to figure out a way to pick up that water. Because that, that's going to be their largest drainage system is the one that comes across the middle of the property where they've got to pick that up from that pond on the south side. They will, they'll have to make sure that that's piped under, across their, across their site, through their site and, and back out on the north side. Did that, did that help answer the question?
Other questions, commissioners, for Barry? Thank you, Barry, as always. We'll give you a moment to respond and then we'll, we'll have our own discussion before we vote.
Okay. Just a couple of things I wanted to bring up. Because a lot of these points, like I said, were not able to be made at the meeting that we had. But Mr. Cypress has donated 14 acres right here on Mustang Road, the, of that green space, for a new park. And he has offered to do the grading for the new baseball fields and provide a, the batting cages and pitching machine. And then also install two pickleball fields to make up for the park that is going to be taken away over here.
You're saying on the corner of Mustang and Hefner?
See the small piece of land that runs just straight up north on Hefner? It's on the east side of Mustang. Go all the way up, Mustang Road, right there. All of that land, and it even goes a little further north, he has donated to the HOA for a new park area.
Okay. But not within this property?
Not within this property, no. I mean, now, this, the park can be used by all of the Surrey Hills area, yes.
Okay.
And then also, as far as traffic concerns, the developers have also said that with, if Oklahoma City would allow, they would be willing to help re-stripe the street and also pay salary for a year for a crossing guard after the development opens to help provide, you know, more safety for the kids.
Well, while I appreciate that, we have no, just so our neighbors are clear, we do not have any authority.
Right.
To require that or to mandate that or to enforce that. So, but I, I think that is a very kind thing to do, but we can't. The city is not involved in that transaction.
I do have one comment that relates to that. I believe there's future plans for the city to widen Mustang Road. So, I think it's very possible in the future that that area could be reduced. So, I just want to make that note.
The donated park.
The donated parking area. Park area.
Anything else for us? Any questions for the developer?
I, I've got, I've got a couple. I'm looking specifically at the, the letter from the Yukon Public Schools. And they have plans to build a new school in the next three to five years. What's your timeline? What is your intention to develop this? Is it to get it permitted and approved and start immediately? Or are you going to, is it potentially going to take a few years to develop?
Sir, please.
Please speak into the microphone.
Yeah. Please go to the microphone.
Give us your name and address.
Speak into the microphone.
Did you say what the timeline is on developing it?
I did, but could you give us your name and, could you give us your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Claude Cypress, 9700 Russell Drive, Yukon, Oklahoma.
Okay.
And that, one thing I, I got up there to say now, forgot what it was. But anyway, your, what was your question?
My, my question to you is, what is your timeline to develop this property?
Probably eight months to a year.
So, you, you intend to start construction immediately?
I think I could get ready to sell lots to the builder. It'll take about a year to get it done. It's, it's a little slow going through Oklahoma City.
Okay. And then the second question I have for you is, and I don't know if it's necessarily relevant, but I'm, I'm, it's going to get to a question. Why do you want to do duplex or twin home development? What is, what is your desire to do that versus single family?
I've, I've been associated with this type of development. It really works well for older people that move in. They, I just had a brother that, I had built him a house 30 years ago. He sold it and moved into a 1,500-foot duplex. And he passed away, but his wife lives there now. And it's a perfect deal because the grass is mowed. And, and, and it's in a, it's over by Lake Overhoser. And it's really a nice development. And it, it's not, it doesn't really look like duplexes the way they build them now. You, we're making these lots 80 feet wide. And that way, you can move them around and it doesn't look like in-row houses. And, and we're, we'll go eight and 12 pitch on the roofs, so they're not flat. So, it's going to be a good development. I got to tell you, I owned the golf course for several years. And the reason, the people in the, on the west side of, of, what's that street?
Mustang Road.
Yeah. Mustang Road. There's about 250 houses in that development. And it's around the golf course. And they, they are going to make a park out of that. There's a creek runs full length from this development up into the golf course. And we're going to tie it all together and put a couple of baseball parks and a couple of, what's this little, what do you call it?
Pickleball.
Pickleball. And we have a lot of calls for that around the golf course. They'd like to have a spot they can play pickleball. So, we're tying this whole thing together is what we want to do. And we'll have 45. Now, let me tell you, we've also figured going single family, and you'll fix them where they not, don't look like they're in row. But we could just get 60, 65 of those. And there'll be one house, one family per. So, it really cuts back a lot of, it's a whole lot better to have the duplex. And we're going to make it look good and taking, I don't know if she said this, but taking three of those baseball parks away from the school is going to really lighten the traffic a lot. When you have three, three teams out there practicing, it takes quite a few cars. So, that, that will lighten up the load of the traffic on that, that little four-lane road. So, but anyway.
Okay. Thank you for your time. You have questions? Any remaining questions for developer?
Nope.
Okay. Comments before we take a vote? I'll say this. I empathize greatly with regard to the school. I, I think that in a dream world, we would all have neighborhood schools that were strong, where we could all send our kids and let them walk on their own and they would be safe. I hate to hear about the issues with traffic. I hate to hear about the danger. I wish that we had better tools, regardless, again, whether this is, whether we say no to this or not, this is still a problem. Like, it's going to be a problem. So, it needs to be resolved. And the city needs to create better methods from being more responsive to a more immediate problem. I will say it again, and I've said it many times. I know you all haven't been here to hear it. But I am deeply concerned by the way that the city, the state of Oklahoma funds schools. It makes it very difficult to scale up quickly when we have growing areas all across our great city that can't build bigger schools fast enough because the way that we have chosen as a state to fund our schools. I think it's unacceptable. I think it's wrong. Again, whether we vote yes for this redevelopment or not, it's still going to be a problem. And it needs to be fixed. And I'll join you in going to go talk to your legislators. I talked to mine and I complain about just that. The way we fund our schools is, is completely inadequate. I, I also think that it's a tough decision because the infrastructure clearly is not there currently. It's not. I, but we're really debating between having R1 units at 65 and having duplex units at 90. And so, for me, I'm asking myself, what's the, what does that mean? Is it enough? Is it not enough? What is the impact of that? I'm torn. I'm torn. It's a difficult decision. I don't know that the infrastructure's there currently. I know that it will, it can get there. If there are more rooftops, it does lead to more investment. But then what does that cost our neighbors? And so, it's, this is a tough call to make. I think if, maybe it should be considered, maybe what we should look at is if there is an SPUD and we limited the spaces where there'd be duplexes. Maybe there's a way that we can physically change the site that addresses some of these issues, that might make it easier for us to be okay with added density. Because one of the values that having duplexes in a space like this is, is, one, there could be seniors, as the applicant has, has shared. But there can also be families who otherwise would not have the opportunity to live in a beautiful, wonderful neighborhood like this, who may now have that opportunity when we allow for this, these types of developments to occur. So, I'm torn, but I'm happy to hear from other, other commissioners about it.
I mean, I, I think that is a question worth asking is if the applicant would consider converting this to SPUD. That would allow a little bit more ability, flexibility for the neighbors to weigh in and maybe get a few more of their concerns addressed. But that, that's completely on you. You're well within your rights to have this, to request this application. I think there's the ability to put it into an SPUD and, and create something that is a little bit more accessible to the commission, to the neighbors. It's just going to take a little bit more time.
All right. Mr. Chair, I'd like to jump in before we go that direction. I'm not as torn. I think this is easy. It's already R1. Let's leave it alone. I mean, if this was ag and we were trying to figure out if this should be R1 and be, you know, we're taking away baseball fields and it's really sad, but it's R1. There's, there's no reason to press the envelope. To me, doing a spud to figure out where we put duplexes, where we don't, this is a fine spot for R1. When this was made R1 a long time ago, it was perfectly fine. It's R1. It's not broke. Don't fix it. I, I think that if this was not R1, we'd be talking a lot of stuff. But it's already what it needs to be. I'm, I'm ready to just move on. R1, deny it, R1. Appreciate the offer to donate some other space. I hope you do that, whether it's R1 or R2. It's really sad those baseball fields are going away and people didn't know it was privately owned. But I'd, I'd love for you to donate that other space, but I think it should be, it's R1 now. I think it should stay R1 and we move forward.
It's a valid point.
If it was a spud, could we require traffic signaling to be installed by the developer? Does that have to go, that has to.
You have the traffic commission, correct?
It would, but so what, your question is, would, could we require, could you require a traffic signal?
Yeah. At the intersection of Hefner and Mustang, could, a stoplight? And, and that's paid for by the developer? In a spud?
That's maybe a legal question. It's, it's on an arterial, so I think the city is responsible for that through impact fees. So, it would be the city. And we'll tell you, it has, clearly, there's a peak traffic problem. And as was said, our traffic counts are old from 2018, but they're pretty low. So, I don't know that it would.
Okay. I'm just curious. You explained it once already, but I'd ask it again.
I also heard that the lots are 80-foot wide already.
Has it been plotted?
No. Yes. But he did say that we're going to be 80-foot lots, so.
Yeah.
I mean, it's an 80-foot lot. That's like a single-family 40-foot lot. We just approved.
You're talking, oh, you're talking about the next application, though, right?
Well, just, and I'd like to see a PUD in this so we could tighten it up, but.
Makes sense. Well, maybe we need to, any other, anything else? Maybe we just need to see where we are.
I got up here to answer his, he asked me a question, I think.
Sure.
Didn't you? About SPUD?
Mm-hmm.
The addition that I was talking about is on, out by Lake Overhoser. It's a nice, you turn off a gated community. And there's several people, I know several people live there, so I know about it. And actually, there are about half and halves. They have a single family with zero lot line. And then they'll have a duplex. And they've scattered those in there and they've made a nice-looking subdivision.
Okay. That's fine. But my question, my question specifically was, would you reconsider resubmitting this application as an SPUD?
Yeah. Well, you'd still have to have.
Sorry. And technically, it would be a PUD, but thank you.
I didn't hear, I didn't hear what you said.
Technically, the application would be a PUD.
Yeah. Because it's more than five acres, but.
I don't know. Where are five votes? Okay.
Chairman, I would point out, for what it's worth,
Chairman, I would point out for what it's worth that there, there are a lot of R2 properties within Surrey Hills. It's not like there's any shortage of them.
Okay. I think we're ready for a motion. I think we need to see where we are. If the applicant is not willing to move to an SPUD, we certainly cannot force them. So the question before us is whether or not, what the recommendation to city council will be. So I, I think we should just go ahead and vote up or down. I'm not convinced, just looking at, I think, let's just see where we are.
And then I'm, I'm prepared to make a motion to deny the rezoning request.
Commissioner Clare moves to deny, to recommend to city council denial of PC 10914. I think I'm looking at the wrong screen. Sorry, that motion's been seconded by Commissioner LaForge. I will say before we vote, commissioners, again, you're voting in the negative. You're voting to recommend denial. So if you vote yes, you are saying you want the city council to deny this application. If you vote no, you are saying you do not want the city council to, to recommend that it be denied. So just to be clear, yes means you want this to not happen. And the motion passes, which means that we are recommending denial of this application to city council. That does not mean, and I just want to make sure that we clarify this for our neighbors. We are making a recommendation to the city council. The city council will make an ultimate decision. This decision is not final. But I do know that the city council takes into significant consideration the recommendation of the planning commission. So I just want to be very clear about that. We are now in line for item 26.
Item 26 is KC 7615, preliminary plat of Brownfield, located north of West Hefner Road and east of North Mustang.
We'll need to ask for a continuance on this.
Commissioner Clare?
Yeah, I'll move to continue item 7615.
Commissioner Clare?
Indefinitely.
Indefinitely?
Yeah.
No, that's not it? What do we need to do in order for them to be able to get it whenever they?
Would you like to defer the item until? I guess, it depends on if this is going to go to the city council with a recommendation of denial. If so, we could probably move it to a date that's more in line with that council decision?
Okay.
Or we could move it.
Council's recommending we do that, is just move it. So it'd be eight weeks from now, essentially.
First meeting in May?
I guess the question to you, are you planning to take, go forward to city council with a recommendation of denial? Or are you going to regroup?
We're going to, we're going to rework. We're going to probably go with R1, stick with R1 and replat. Okay, so if that's the case, then we'll need to continue it to at least, probably the, at least the second meeting in April? Don't you think? Because we'll, we'll, we'll re-notice.
Okay.
Is that enough time?
Is that 4:22?
Should be April 25th.
Okay. I'll move to continue the item to April 25th.
Commissioner Clare moves to continue C 7615 to April 25th. The motion's been seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes. To clarify for our neighbors, we did not recommend that it be, that the zoning be changed to duplexes. So if they come back to us with a plat, it cannot be for duplexes. So don't panic and think, I've got to be here on April 25th. Well, if they bring it back on April 25th, it would have to be single family plating. So just so you're clear about that. Okay.
Thanks, guys. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. All right, we're moving on with our agenda. Are there any additional items?
Okay.
We got back to it. Yeah. Yeah. Glad you caught it. Okay, planning commission committees, I understand the committee met this morning. I'm sorry that I couldn't join. It probably was shorter because I wasn't there. Was it any report from that? Nate, do you have anything on the committee?
Committee report from this morning.
DRC, yeah. So in the near future, you guys will be seeing things come to us here at Planning Commission. You'll see draft ordinance of the new accessible dwelling unit ordinance as well as the Hefner Parkway aesthetic corridor.
Okay. Sounds good. We're going to fight about signs? Great. I love fighting about signs, right? Commissioner Powers?
It's kind of a fight.
Okay, any other reports from committees? All right, commission members. Commissioner Clare?
Yeah, it was a tough one today. You know, I think in a lot of the, a lot of the concerns that we heard are still going to be very important when this, if it comes back as a single family. I think the, the main thing to acknowledge is we are in a very tough position when it comes to school districts.
Yes.
We do not have that authority. The city council doesn't have that authority. That all happens at the state level. And, you know, one of the things that we have to keep in mind is that, you know, regionally, we're 8,000 units, home units shy. And I just don't feel that we can hold up proposals, applications that meet Plan OKC requirements just for the fact that the school districts don't have all the resources they need and can't get them timely. So it's, it's a, it's awful and I hate that we're in this position. But something has to change.
At least in this case, you know, the UConn school districts are not in the same position as some of these like tiny ones.
Yeah. Deer Creek and Oakdale.
Where they don't have any bonding capacity.
Yeah.
You know, where they're completely maxed out for the next 25 years on their bonds or whatever. So, I mean, UConn schools can raise money and billboard schools, so.
That's a good point. Anything else, Commissioner Clare?
Just, I don't know how relevant it is, but I went, I went and looked at school, UConn school bond issue and, you know, they lasted one in '21, so a lot's changed. But their priorities were not new schools. It was getting teachers and adding classrooms. So I'm, I'm sure that's changed since then, but I, I thought that that was interesting, that their priorities was not new schools.
I'm sure they're still looking for teachers.
Yep, absolutely. Thank you, Commissioner Clare. Commissioner Powers?
The, the meeting this morning, the DRC meeting was very informative and helpful. And I think, you know, that's all going to be even more helpful and, and interesting when it gets here. So I, I think it's moving in the right direction.
It's encouraging.
Yeah, I think so.
Commissioner Meek?
Yeah, I went to the meeting this morning and we had a case today that there was an accessory dwelling in a, in a PUD. And I just still have a concern that we're not, I don't think that with the, and you can tell me if I'm wrong, Jeff. I don't believe that with the PUD approvals, with these accessory dwellings and more coming at us in the new code, we addressed today in that meeting that these, these accessory dwellings need address designations. And all the ones we're releasing in, you know, snowflake zoning or whatever you want to call it, we're not addressing that. And the one we addressed today, we didn't address that. So every dwelling unit where people or families live need an address designation. And I'm just real, it's one of my big deals because you don't want, like, for the ones that weren't there, you don't want a public emergency officials kicking in a primary residence door when someone in the back's got a fire or a medical emergency. And without us specifying that in the ones that come to us before the code update, I think it needs to be addressed, maybe in a TE. That's all I got.
That's good. It's interesting.
Even like ones that I, that we approved in my ward today, do you think that we needed to do something?
Is your mic on? Commissioner Powers? My wife can't hear.
So I'm sorry, my, my mom too. So the, the ones that we approved like in my ward, you think there was something that we needed to do that we didn't do about that?
I'm going to ask for staff to check on that before our next meeting. I don't believe that Development Services is going, going on new builds. Yes, they may. But conversions, no.
Yeah, I would agree though that the, I mean, I completely agree with your point. And I think it was well made today and well received by staff and others. And I understood that if these are permit, if it's a new structure and it's being permitted, they're going to require that address designation.
I will hope so.
And, and when we, when we put through the ADU, it'll, it'll definitely address that.
Right.
But I, I'm hoping that even though these snowflake ones are, that's also addressed. The conversions, there's going to be a few slip through, I think. But those are probably not going to really shift the, I mean, it's still a concern of yours, I accept.
It's a liability and that's just something I worry about.
But yeah.
Good point. Oh, sorry, I skipped my turn. I'll, I'll wait. Commissioner Newman?
Oh, I have nothing today. Trying to be quiet.
That's okay. No, we encourage you to speak up. Commissioner Gobean?
I think nothing else other than the, if they were to come back with a SPUD. Well, anyway, not, not, PUD.
PUD.
Sorry. You know, I mean, to me, that wasn't an issue of duplex versus R1 as much as the safety and the concerns of the surrounding development. So that if the P, if there's things we can do in a PUD that would alleviate some of these other concerns about how pedestrian and vehicles and circulation happens around the site.
Would have been really tough, but.
It would have been really tough and it will be if that's where they, where they come back with. But we should think about that.
And my question on that one right there is.
Oh, I guess we're not.
Six months ago or eight months ago or a year ago when we just approved.
Don't talk about cases.
It hasn't been voted on by the council.
But anyways. But it seems as if we've approved a lot of houses in the UConn school district and not had that large of a care on transportation or any of that density. And today, you know, it seemed different, but.
Yeah, it was, this is kind of a. I think kind of a unique situation, really because of the growth of the area. You know, just how much it has changed over the last, of course, that's now 40 years. I talk about it like it was just yesterday, but, you know, it's like, there's no difference. It's like from, it went from being a sleepy little small town thing to, you know.
Yeah, I grew up around there and there was nothing, like you said, south of Hefner. And now there's.
The Cheek Ranch.
Rooftops everywhere.
I mean, it was like there was nothing. Yeah.
Anything else, Commissioner Gobean?
Well, I, I'm sorry, might as well spend a little more. It's, it's, we got nine minutes till five. No. Well, it's also very difficult when people have, citizens have serious concerns about their, their property values and what's coming next, you know, next to them. And consistency on these, these things is hard to get sometimes because each case has its own individual merits. And so, yeah, anyway, that, that was a struggle, so. End with that.
Challenge. Commissioner Noble?
Nothing else. I don't think today, learning about, you know, the corridor on Hefner and then accessory dwellings, I think it'll, it'll help us and maybe actually reduce our caseload.
Great. We'll take that. I'd love to be out well before five. Commissioner LaForge?
I'll say this, it's hard. We, what happens, I think, is we are here every other week and you get so used to seeing such a wide variety of things that your relative scale of what seems appropriate or what's extreme and what's not is so different than the people we serve. Because our experience in, with different types of development is just much more vast. So I, I'm going to think hard about, you know, the duplexes that we approved, which was just such a small, I mean, it was just such a really small area, but clearly is going to have a dramatic impact on those people who are immediately affected. And then we're talking about another one where we're talking about 95 units, you know? I think it's really important for us to just have empathy for the people that are here and make them feel respected for the time that they're here. And I think it's really important for us to continue to have meaningful conversations with neighbors before they get here. Because I think that contributes to their sense of fairness about the process. So appreciate everyone's patience as we worked through all of this today. Anything from the planning department?
Yes, I have seven minutes, right?
Exactly seven minutes.
So we, the Vision Zero plan, we're excited about. I think I've mentioned it a time or two. And we are looking for volunteers from this August body. We have, we have an advisory group as we always do for our plans. And so we would like less than a quorum of planning commissioners to be involved, of course. But if we could get a, the Vision Zero plan, it's, it is, you want me to give you a quick summary?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I only have six minutes.
Hurry.
Oh, okay. So the Vision Zero plan, Vision Zero refers to the, the vision of having zero fatalities. So it's, it's something that if we get a successful plan put together, if we get a plan put together, we can then apply for significant federal funds for our transportation infrastructure. And it will also help us spend our, our local funds as well. So it is multimodal. We, we have a federal grant. It's a million dollar plan, mostly funded by the federal government. And it'll apply to making our intersections safer. It will apply for, to bike, ped, bus, car, all of it. And basically, anything that works, we want to, to put in the plan and try and do. So that's kind of the, the story in a nutshell. A lot of cities have done this. So we are certainly not on the cutting edge here, but we are wanting to get this done so we can start influencing safety in the city and just making it, making it safer for all. So, yeah, that, and we're looking for, like I said, advisory group. We would have, we would meet once every month, roughly. We're trying to get this done by the end of the year or thereabouts because our contractor, Kim Lee Horn, is on contract to immediately write a grant proposal so that we can start to get these federal funds before they go away, because that may happen. So we are trying to get a group of planning commissioners, traffic commissioners, city council members and other stakeholders, transportation stakeholders in the, in the community involved in this.
Sounds like we have Commissioner Clare. Commissioner Powers?
Yes, of course I will.
Commissioner Meek? Can't do it? Anybody else over here? Yeah, I can't either.
Thank you for volunteering.
Little bit. But we appreciate it. It's a valuable, it's a valuable thing for us to do this.
I accept on the basis of our plan being done by the end of the year. It's like I, I wouldn't sign on for another like, oh, four or five years.
Four or five years, yeah.
Maybe we'll have this, you know? But if it's really something you think we can, we can put together and whip out and get some money out of the federal.
Yes, that is, that is the goal. And that's why we're really pushing. And we have a consultant, has many consultants actually, that have a lot of capacity to get it done. So they've got a lot of people on it.
I will just say, I haven't been on a bicycle since I was 12 years old, so, you know. And I, you know, walking back and forth with my car is about the extent of my pedestrian activity, but.
I'm sure there'll be some field trips.
You know, can Commissioner Meek come whenever he's available? Because I do think his.
Yes.
Point of view as a first responder, as someone who knows significant information about public safety would be really helpful. It's a helpful perspective.
It'd only be about six, six meetings. So we'll, we'll put you on the optional list as having been voluntold.
He would be so good at it.
Yeah. As long as we don't have a quorum, we're good, so.
Okay.
If anybody wants to come, just let me know. But we'll, we'll make sure and invite you three for sure.
Yeah, let's volunteer privy.
Oh, yeah, he's not here.
Yeah, let's volunteer privy. I agree with that. He's in. All right. Municipal council's office?
Unfortunately, I'm out of time. Jeff used all my time.
You have two minutes. All right. Not even Mr. Warrior could hang out with us for citizens to be heard. Seeing as we are at the end of our agenda, we adjourn.